We're live. Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, September 23rd, 2024. It is now 6:00 PM. We're here for a special session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Mr. Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this great country that we live in. We thank you for the gift of life. May we execute this meeting today in a righteous and also understanding and patient means of way. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting tonight. At this time, we'll have a public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take actions on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff that may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some of the course of response. Is there anybody who wishes to speak that's not here to speak on the budget? We'll have a public hearing for that also. Being done, I'll close the public testimony. No over business, Commissioner, no consent on the new business action item number one. Public hearing, consideration, and action on adopting, approving, and/or ratifying proposed fiscal year '24-'25 budget. That does raise more taxes than the fiscal year '23-'24 budget and all related issues. At this time, I'll make a statement again. I'm sorry that we couldn't get another venue. Our IT people said that they didn't have enough time to make sure that we could be up. They would not guarantee it for us. We have to have everything recorded. We have to have everything where the public can be able to be in there, and we couldn't accommodate that in time with our IT department, so we apologize for that. And also, again, we're here because of errors discovered in the budget that we can take action. I think it was asked of us last time. We can, because of the mistake and not having enough time to repost, we have no choice but to go to the no new revenue rate or lower. So that's what we'll be talking about tonight. With that, I'll open up the... The Commissioners, if you've got anything to say for opening up the public testimony.
I was looking at the budget in reference to items that had been changed or, you know, there were some mistakes made where people filled out what they desired on their budget. In fact, it was left blank. We had a... We've taken care of that, having we in reference to this.
Mm-hmm. Did we do that last meeting?
Pardon?
We did that for Judge Linden's office at the last meeting. He failed to fill out part of his request.
Okay. And the last time that we met, there was a discussion in reference to the retirees and reference to increase. Have we made a decision on that?
No, we're going to talk about that in just a little bit.
Good enough. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? All right. At this time, I'll open it to public testimony. Shannon Manley, please come forward.
I would like to address a concern that was raised during the last Commissioners' Court special session regarding potential conflicts of interest. During that session, Judge Stovall questioned Philip Martin about whether he should vote on a raise for retired county employees, given that Martin would benefit financially if the raises were approved. Martin agreed and stated he would abstain from voting on that issue. Judge Stovall found this conflict of interest significant enough to bring it up, and I appreciate the transparency in addressing it. I believe a similar question requiring the same level of transparency should now be asked regarding Commissioner Harrison. Like Martin, Harrison is a member of law enforcement. His commission has been held by the Hunt County Fire Marshal's Office since August of 2014, as evidenced by his T. Cole record here. In the Commissioners' Court meeting minutes from August 24th, 2021, Record Number 16954, it shows that Harrison made the motion for the court to approve an order reappointing Richard Hill as the fire marshal for Hunt County for another two-year term, beginning September 2021 through August 2023, with the salary of $67,000 per year increasing to $71,000 as of October that same year. Harrison made the motion with a second by Martin. The reappointment order from August 24th, 2021, both of these linked on the Hunt County website, signed by all Commissioners, including Harrison. Richard Hill was reappointed again on September 26th, 2023, for a two-year term expiring in August of 2025. This motion was again made by Harrison and Monroe, second by Martin, Record Number 18379. There's no linked document to that one like the other. It's concerning that he's been able to historically vote and make motions related to the appointment and increase in salary for fire marshal Richard Hill when the Hunt County Fire Marshal's Office holds his law enforcement commission. Does this present a conflict of interest? While the reappointment of the fire marshal will not come up again until 2025, I believe it's worth noting now as we, the county, are seeking transparency. Does the proposed budget include a salary increase for this individual? If so, who is voting on it? These are serious concerns that require careful consideration and transparency. Thank you, Judge Stovall, for reminding us last session how important it is to be on the lookout for conflicts of interest. I urge you, the court, to investigate this matter, take appropriate action to ensure the integrity of the voting process while creating a fair and appropriate budget for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel, you want to address that, or can you?
No, that's not a conflict of interest. Conflict of interest laws are based on income and not who holds what license. After the last meeting, I looked into whether it's a conflict for Philip to vote on that, and it's also not. It doesn't rise the level of conflict of interest, and it's a governmental entity. Those two things create a distance between the conflict laws. Conflict laws basically relate to if the government's doing any sort of business with a private entity, and that person who needs to vote has a conflict based on the finances. If they make more than 10% of their previous 12 months' annual income from that private corporation, or if somebody related to them in the first degree is saying what he does, then that is a conflict. Other than that, to address that specifically, that voting on reappointment of a government officer is not a conflict under those conflict rules. Yes, sir?
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I did check out, like I told you, and I appreciate you calling me this morning and saying that if there was no conflict. I think it would be hard for there to be a conflict. Basically, every employee in the state, or correction in the county here, puts into retirement. They have a right to put it in, or they, by law, do it as far as taking it off. And therefore, there was no conflict, and I appreciate what studying you did, and I appreciate the other assistance that I got out of Austin. Thank you.
I mean, for clarity, Philip, I wouldn't attacking you. I was just trying to help you, because my concern was, I agree with what was said. My concern and what Daniel did research was, you're already drawing on the plan which would benefit from it. Voting to give raises, and you retire next year, it wouldn't affect you, even though...
If I'm not mistaken, that wouldn't affect you.
So you're all good. I just want to make sure you're okay. That's all.
I wouldn't... I don't know whether it'd affect me or not, because I wouldn't have retired as far as that. So whether it does or not, that, I guess, was a big...
Well, that's why HR told me, the way the system works, that you would not benefit going forward, but you would benefit back. And that was my only question. I just, again, I didn't want you to do something wrong.
Well, that's all right. For your information, I'll say this right here. I worked for the state as a highway patrol for almost 30 years. I retired. I came to work and basically ran for office in 2000. I came into office in 2001. Eight years later, I was elected, or the election, they basically got someone else to run. So I retired, because I was vested with all this. So I did retire. And then I was asked to come back to where I could run again, because the people missed me. And I have served three since, and I appreciate that. But it's not about retirement. It's about caring about the people, and that's what I'm going to leave it at that. I can vote on this. It's legal for me to vote on this, and thank y'all for listening to the story.
Thank you, Philip. Billy Duncan?
Yes, I was... A couple of things. One, you just stated that there would not be an increase in taxes this year due to some other reason.
Yes, sir. We made an error in our postings, and we did not have time to correct it and post it again. So the law said we had to go to the no new revenue rate, which is .3233.
So it was the same as last year? In other words, you're not going up this year?
No, it's actually less than last year.
Okay, but you are not going up this year?
No, sir.
Okay. I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Okay. Charles Metter? Is it Metter? There he is.
Thank you for saying it properly.
Some of them are hard to read, so sometimes...
Okay. Y'all got to smile. Y'all, I feel like I'm coming here and I'm going to get hung, okay? First of all, thank you for this opportunity again. We do appreciate the fact that you did it again on an even time period that we can come talk to you and discuss this. Now, one clarification I want to ask, and I'll walk out here if that's true. You stated you're not going to raise anything where we're at. Do we still have the ability to ask you to lower it by 3%? Because we're looking at $2.5 to $2.8 billion on average every year of taxable income coming in for the city with everything that's going on. I would like to think that we should go to taking some more money away from what we're paying in tax with all this revenue that's coming in. But I don't know. I'm not quite understanding all the verbiage that's going on right here, but that's my thought process based upon that.
Well, the no new revenue rate is a rate that does not collect any more taxes than last year.
Yes, sir.
And last year's tax rate was .336, I believe.
.336.
And this year, no new revenue rate is .323328. Yeah. So by law, we have to go to that rate or lower.
Okay. Well, I would like to propose that you go a little bit lower, because you're going to be bringing in upon a possibility of up to $2.5 to $2.8 billion more dollars, and that should cover anything and everything that you've got to do.
Not billions of dollars.
I mean, it's taxable, and it's money that's coming in.
Right.
Okay? So you're getting that coming in. So if we're not going with any major construction or anything else going on right now, that should cover, because you're operating in a surplus and have been for many years.
We've...
Because the government's not supposed to be making money. They're supposed to be breaking even and going. And I don't want to handicap you, because I want you to get everything done, because I want to have everything right, but we need that money just as much as you do. And so that's where I'm just trying to say, we try to find a happy medium in the middle. And I heard somebody say transparency, that's the most beautiful thing in the world. We can work together. If you come back and tell me, Chuck, I can prove to you we need this, then I'm all in. If not, let's get the money back to everybody. That's all I'm asking here, and I would love for it to go backwards instead of go forwards with that. Okay?
Yes.
It's one of my time. Thank you.
You bet. Maybe I'll address a couple of those things. I know there's a lot of discussion on social media about how much money we had and didn't have. I've explained it one other time. It was stated we had 42 million. We had approximately that 42 million. Our fund balance policy states, and it's been a record of over five years it's been this way, we have to have 25% of our budget revenue in reserves all the time. So at the time, when we had the other rate, the revenues, it was going to be about 42 million. Now, it's about 12.5 that we're required of that.
Okay. And that's mandated by the state, sir?
That's by this court. We sit here, see, just like good personal financials, they tell you to save three months, three months...
Yes, sir.
...of money on hand if we had to, if something happened, and we didn't have revenue come in, and there's a catastrophe or something happened. We need money on hand to take care of the people that we have. So that's just a good business policy that nearly all businesses follow. Our Commissioners have a 15% fund balance policy, so that they keep money to make sure if they need money going forward, they're not going to run out of money, and so they continue. We have, at the time, we had about 15 million in capital improvements, which is already... We've already purchased property. We've hired architects, and in the process of doing that, we moved 15 million out of our fund balance to capital improvement. So when the architectural plans are finished, which is supposed to be in December, that we'd be ready to go to bid to get those new facilities. And that would move our county clerk out of the courthouse, which gets a lot of complaints. Some people complained here a little bit last week. You can't get in the courthouse for security. She hears, we can't find a parking place, you can't get through security, and she has the most traffic in the courthouse. And she hears a lot of complaints from people about that. So we're moving in the voter's office over there, administration. It's a disaster. If you don't think so, spend some time and go into the back. There's cracks, or water comes up in the floor. We got $1 million worth of voting equipment over there in not very good quarters, and it's not a very pleasant place to work. And it's not very pleasant for the public. So we're including that over there. Those are the two biggies. We're moving community development and 911 and the Health Department Environmental, which is in this building. If you're going to build a house, do a development, do whatever, you have to talk to those three departments. And now you have to go over here, and then you have to go to the courthouse, do security, and sometimes you have to come back here. So we put them all in one spot and on the highway. You can get it all done in one, go through one door, and you can see all those people at one time. So it'll help a lot with the efficiency of how we work. And then for, you know, I thought it was important, the courts agreed with me so far, that we're moving homeland security out there also, just to have a police presence. We'll be on the interstate. A lot of people out there coming and going. Probably have to have other security as well, but with a police presence out there, it should be a good deterrent. So that's going to fill that building up, and that will free us up.
Is that Puddin Hill?
That's Puddin Hill. Yes, sir. We're going to tear down the brick building and the metal building. That's what we're going to occupy. There's 25,000-plus feet in that. So that's the plan, to get things out of the courthouse and make it more available for the public to get to, easier to get to and easier to be served. And that's where that's headed. So you take that away, we're at 30 million. And then we got six, I think at that time, there's seven, eight million that was in ARPA funds that we have to spend or obligate by the end of the year. We voted last time to spend 2.3 million, I think, on radios. So that's already come down. We're going to have a four-point... If the budget's approved as it is, we'll have a $4.4 million deficit budget this year, which we've had a deficit budget every year the last five years. The tax rates come down 40% in the last five years, but to your credit and to your explanation, we've gone up significantly. But this year, I think we went up a billion four-ish. Last year, I think it was two and a half. And so we have had increases, but, and it was probably, you know, I'll take credit... I mean, it's my budget. I recommended the 3.55 this year, because it got us to a balanced budget for the first time, where we've been running negative. And it was probably a mistake to reach out and try to get to there, but if we had gone to that, I think what you're saying next year would be absolutely true. When I got here, and I was here five years ago, our average age cars was 18 and a half years old. Our sheriff's cars were about to fall apart. We started trying to buy them. COVID hit. We couldn't get them for a while. That's why we built up so much. We couldn't make our budget for three years, because everything was shut down. You couldn't get anything. We couldn't do repairs that we planned to do in the budget. That's how we started. It wasn't anything that we were up here planning to do. It just kind of happened. And so now, we've got the sheriff, and all of our departments are basically in new cars now. We've got them through a system now that in the future, hopefully, that'll never happen if we keep up with the way we're paying for them. They're in the budget, and as we replace them every four years, it won't hurt our budget much. We spent, we're spending about $6 million on radios right now that we're about funded out for our law enforcement, and then two for the fire departments. So we've been spending money well. We've given raises, yes, and I know people have been upset about it. Five years ago, we had up to 20 vacancies in the jail, and we were out of compliance. We've got our raises up enough, and same thing in law enforcement. Sheriff was always down several deputies. We had about half staff in dispatch. We've got the salaries up now where everybody wants to work. We're nearly fully staffed, and we got everybody, we're there at a pay scale that we don't have to, we don't have to feel with as much anymore. We came from very little. We had some people making $30,000 a year working here, and I know a lot of people struggled, but they were struggling too. We had our deputies in the jail were making $34,000 a year at the time. You couldn't get anybody to work. I wouldn't work over there for a million dollars a year. That's a terrible place to have to be. So all the things we've been doing, we've come a long way, and we shouldn't be having to do a whole lot more, and we've paid for everything with cash. We have nearly zero debt. Our debt tax rate is less than one cent, it's a half a cent. Other counties would love to have us. They're all at 5%, 4%, 5%, 6%, 7%, 8%. And that's forever. You can't get rid of that till you pay that debt off. So we're fighting to try to keep no debt up here, so we don't have to raise taxes long-term. And several people said it last time, and I think we're real close going forward. We may have to wait another year because of the setback this year, but we're real close to meeting that goal, that we will be able to live with the growth for a while. I explain it as economy of scales. I had my own business 38 years. I learned this a few times. You start growing, and you work real hard, and you get a whole lot of stuff, and you don't make any more money than you're making. You have to reach a point to where you get to a point where all of a sudden you make more money. It levels out where your expenses do. Then if you want to grow some more, you got to go way up there. Well, in business, I could control that. I could raise prices. I could not offer services. I could do things to keep that here. Here, we got to take what comes at us. We don't have a choice. We have to be prepared for it. And I think we've done it. I'm proud of what this court has done over the last few years to get us to that point, and hopefully, that y'all will be happy with it in years to come, that we have got this done, and we've got everything in a lot better shape.
Everything you said is very commendable, and I admire you. I wish I had known a lot of that, if it was visible for me to see that.
I understand, and I apologize for that.
Okay. Communication, I think, on both sides would be helpful, to where we started talking a little more, so everybody can understand that, because we don't want to take anything away from you, but as you pointed out, you have to have money in reserve. People out here are working a $35,000, $40,000 job, trying to have money...
I agree.
...in reserve for their stuff. So there has to be a balance, because everything is going up in cost. I cannot imagine to be in my mid-30s again with a family and trying to raise. At least at this point, I can take my grandkids out and just go buy them ice cream, and I send them home. I'm not paying for them to work at a house, but I know several of my partners that have to do that. I cannot imagine what that's like with that kind of increase. So please, more transparency, visibility, and discussion, and never forget the fact that everybody in this room is just like what the court's trying to do. They want to have a little bit of surplus in case something goes wrong, so they can take care of their families. And thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rodney Gregory?
This is not really pointed at y'all. This is for these people back here. All these people back here are concerned, and that's why they're all here.
My friend, you're going to have to talk in that mic, please. Thank you.
All of us are hurting right now. All of us are scared what's going to happen in the near future, and we've all been awakened to corruption, if you listen to anything or see anything that's going on in this country. The corruption is deep everywhere, not just the government, all in your local governments. Everything I've been following for the last four years, you got to start at your local governments if you won't change. This man is the start of change, because he has brought it to our attention that we've even got a meeting for number one, much less the tax increase. Second of all, these four guys right here, including him, number five, those are the guys that voted in all these raises. There's a lot of stuff that we don't know about, because we all work one, two, three jobs. I mean, I got two little side businesses that I do. My wife, she got caught up in this government corruption with corporation, 24 years with Kohl's, got fired last year for stopping a shoplifter. So she's at home. I do it all, except for what we run on, because she's already in her retirement at 53 years old. I'm helping my neighbor out next door, and I'm sure because I've been cleaning up on her property, they're going to try and tax her more, and she's disabled. Where does it end? I'll tell you where it ends. It ends when we start really paying attention to what goes on in this county, and we start voting the right people in positions. That's when we start seeing change, and we start paying attention to where our money goes. Because I know of two... I don't know how much it costs for y'all to live, but I don't make nowhere close to $100,000 a year. And I know of one elected official in the last three years, got $27,500 raises, and it's all public notice. I mean, you can see it. And I know, I don't know how much the Commissioners make. It ain't none of my... Well, it is our business, but this man, it cost us.
Ask taxpayers.
$172,888. $83 for him to sit here. That's not close to right.
That's what it says on the public record. That's including your insurance.
Oh, that's all the perks.
Yeah, that's all the perks.
Still, probably a little high, but he's close.
$111,348 physical year '24-'25. Extra pay, $3,600.
Microphone, sir.
What was that?
Microphone. I can't hear. Okay. $111,348 physical year '24-'25. That's payroll. Extra pay, don't know what that's for, $3,600. $17,100 for vehicle expense. There's another $850 for longevity, and that adds up with his insurance, FICA and all that other stuff. Retirement ends up $172,883. That sounds high, because it is. But there's, all this is public notice. I don't have time to do it all myself. I've got two or three other people that I talk to, I rely on. I ain't got time to do it. I run my butt off trying to make a living and stay afloat, and I know where all y'all do too. But this is what we got to do, to find out what's going on, because you barely do know that there's a public meeting, or that there's any meeting. I mean, everybody knows that second and fourth Tuesday every month, right? Yes, sir. 10 o'clock in the morning, when most of you are at work. That's all I got to say. It's all on YouTube, that you can watch anytime you want to for four years back. I can't watch YouTube running equipment. I can't. You can at home. I could at home, after hours. Right. Yep. You're right. Only thing we got to do is depend on Almighty, because he's the only one that's going to get us through this and try and make time to pay attention to what's going on in your county.
Thanks, sir. Joshua Wilks, Wicks or Welks? Wait. I couldn't tell if it was a C or an L. I'm sorry.
It's okay. My name is Joshua Wicks. I live in Merritt. My wife and I were part owner and operators of AWT Sanitations in Hunt County. A gentleman before him was saying that he would hate to be a dad in his 30s with young kids. Here I am. You say you're almost fully staffed on the police force as of right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you explain to me why I passed a Mexican on I-30 drinking Modelo going down the road like they do all throughout Hunt County all the time without a care because they don't get pulled over for it anyways? Because I worked retail in Greenville for five years called multiple, multiple times saying, hey, these intoxicated, intoxicated people coming into the store all the time, drinking beer outside of the store. I mean, walking into a door drunk and the cops, you just drive home safe, sir.
Where was the store?
I worked at O'Reilly in Greenville for five years.
So you called Greenville Police, not Hunt County Sheriff's Office? Correct.
Even in Farmersville, anywhere, anywhere in Hunt County that I've worked, I've called multiple times for multiple different issues. Nothing was ever resolved. The cops around here, I'm sorry, I wouldn't even call you at this point, any of them. And if our taxes have dropped 40% over the past, past five years, you said?
Rate, tax rate.
Okay. Why was, why is my property tax been higher each year?
Appraisal changes.
Okay. Even when I go to argue against them, they're saying, I had a mobile home, a mobile home that was over 20 years old. And they're saying that it's increasing in rate? If you've ever lived in a mobile home, I'm sure you don't now, but if you've ever had one, those don't increase in rate, they decrease daily, not yearly, daily. And I'd like to draw you, your attention to what's above y'all's heads. I don't know if you guys ever read that. It says, "In God We Trust." I don't think half of you understand what that means or at least believe it. For the record, it does not mean that you trust in God to fill your wallet. Do we know what a tithe is? I'm not trying to belittle you. I'm not trying to make anyone here sound stupid, but a tithe, like you're supposed to tithe to a church, it means 10%. A tithe means a 10th. And if 10% is good enough for God, who are you to ask for more? I don't owe you guys anything anyways. It is pure greed to try to increase taxes on property that I own. I shouldn't have to pay you for anything that I own. Yet I'm still paying. More than half of my paycheck goes to taxes. 20% goes before you even get your paycheck. Then your food's taxed, your vehicles are taxed, your property's taxed. And if you think about having a shed next to your house, that'll be taxed too. They'll tax you for the material, tax you for the labor to build it, and then tax you every day for just having it there. There's too much taxation. Why are we increasing and not decreasing? You guys are getting, and I'm sorry, there, somebody said there's 2.5 million coming in or is it 2.5 billion coming in?
No, there's tax value. Two point, he said 2.5 billion in increased value across the county and home, and property values, not home values, property values.
Right. Last week someone had said million and somebody else had said billion. That's where the question was. But like that gentleman said, and I'm sorry if I'm over time, like the gentleman said, we need to pay attention to who we're voting for and why we're voting. And we need to look a little more towards God and a little less towards man. And just, I'll shut up. Everything that that man said last week that was said, we meant it and we will not forget it. We're not gonna forget it next year if you try to do this again. And we definitely won't forget it next time there's an election for anybody.
Thanks, sir. Michael James.
I came here with a petition to, to stop the tax increase, but you're saying that's already off the table, right? So these 610 people didn't have to show up tonight.
We announced it at the last meeting too.
Well, I think if a county needs money, it needs to sell some of the properties it's got that it's sitting on and have for years, the same as the school districts. Our school districts have got properties that have had over 100 years not bringing in a cent of tax dollars. Property over here on 276 in Quinlan School District has, it's worth a couple hundred thousand dollars, but they won't sell it. I've tried to buy it for the past 10 years. I bought and sold a lot of property in Hunt County in the past 30 years. I paid over $3 million in property taxes. We don't need increases. I need roads that work. They're not working worth a damn. I've had to shut down service, part of my service business on county roads in the 2400s, in the 2500s because I can't afford to drive my trucks down them anymore. They're that bad. They haven't been serviced or worked on in 10, 15 years. We don't need increases. We need stuff done. And if y'all need to, y'all need to sell the property that's over by L3, the county does. 13 acres right there across from the front door. Seeing they're doing nothing. Y'all could get $3 million for it and it'd help the people there at L3 because it could be a convenience store. But instead it's just grown up by the golf course, which half the golf course isn't being used. There's 150 acres over there doing nothing. There's property all over the county that you've gotten back in tax sales. Nobody wanted to buy them. There's properties that are landlocked. You could sell them to a neighbor and get a little bit of money back every year instead of none. You've got the property here. We don't need to raise our taxes.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
So my wife and I just moved to Caddo Milton in 2022, built a little home, just four bedroom, is about 3,000 square foot on three quarters of an acre. First tax bill was $17,000. We went to petition and that was a joke. We asked for, for them to reevaluate the appraisal and we, we went through the steps and, and it was a joke. The person that we were supposed to talk to was the appraiser who was not willing to concede anything. It's the most valuable, or expensive home in our neighborhood. And there's much bigger homes there. So I just feel, as a taxpayer, I feel abused. And when I hear that there's a increase on the table, my intention was to come here and find out who's voting for it so I can start a petition to recall them because it's abusive. And I would second Chuck saying that we need to lower the tax.
Can you speak into the mic a little more? I can't hear out there.
I would second Chuck, who was one of the first speaker, saying that we need to lower the tax. If we need more revenue, we need to incentivize growth here in a way that, that, you know, makes organic value rather than manipulate it through increased valuations and appraisals. So that's, that's all I had to say.
Thanks, sir. Cassidy Taylor.
All right. Do I need to speak, state my name and address?
No, we got it on sheet. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Last time I opened up with the Bible verse, I'm gonna do the same today. "I know the Lord secures justice for the poor and upholds the cause of the needy," and that's from Psalm 140 12, the NIV version of the Holy Bible. "I've come before this panel three times now, September 10th, September 17th, and now today, along with many other citizens of Hunt County, to complete my due diligence and speak up against raising the property tax rate amidst the inflation-ridden economy and worrisome election that's coming. I've come up here as a waitress at a local diner who overhears the day-to-day struggles of working and retired classes, as a real estate agent who mainly works Hunt County and the surrounding counties, trying to find properties and homes for people of all calibers, and as a resident myself who has the majority of her family residing here along in this county as well. September 17th, I asked why you would consider raising taxes at a time like this and mentioned it seemed like political suicide for an elected official to do so, especially with so many people speaking out and begging you not to. Not because they didn't want to, not because they don't want to see the betterment of our county, but because they are struggling to survive right now. I hope you have realized the same question is still circulating in the county and surrounding counties. You have many eyes on you right now. You have many ears listening and paying close attention to what you say and what you do. So I pray you make the right decision as our representative, as our representatives and do right by us. Do the job we put you in the office to do. If we wanted to live like we were in California, we'd move there. But we don't. This is Hunt County, Texas, and we do stand up and speak up against people trying to do us wrong, especially to the degree you pushed for. It's actually embarrassing for me to have previous clients of mine ask me why I spoke so highly of our county when we have a judge trying to raise our tax rate the way he did, especially when it seems to be for selfish and unethical reasons, and to only have it turned down because of an quote unquote error. I have nothing to say to them right now other than I'm praying they make the right choices moving forward, at least until they're up for reelection. It doesn't stop with raising the property tax. Our commissioners are in charge of budget as a whole. What you do with that money, how you allocate that money, it does matter. And because of the stunt that was pulled with the vote to move forward with an increased tax rate at this horrible time, as I mentioned earlier, you do have a lot of eyes and ears on you right now. You are still entrusted with millions of our hard-earned money as it is, whether you have it in reserves or not, or whether you need to have it in reserves or not. So use it and use it wisely. I do understand not everyone is religious. I understand religion can be offensive to some as well. Understand, I do believe in the Holy Bible and in the great power of prayer and respectfully I am praying for each and every one of you for peace of mind, for courage, and for wisdom. You have the power to do some horrible things, which now is what is expected of all of you. But you also have the power to do things the right way. I think we've all voiced our concerns enough for you to know without a doubt what we need to see here. And I'm thankful to have the opportunity to come up here and speak up. I appreciate every one of you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Anybody else? Did we miss anybody? No, I'll close. Okay, Daniel.
All right. This is from Deborah Cooley. Hello, I just wanted to voice my opinion about the tax increase. I'm newly retired. I've tried my best to find a job that I can do, but no one wants to hire a 69-year-old. My 90-year-old mother lives with me. We're both now on fixed income and can't afford high taxes. I left for 40 for various reasons, one being the high property tax rate. It seems like y'all don't care that you're making it hard for folks to stay in their homes, like you would rather them, us, live in the streets. Shame on you all. I for one know how I'll vote if this increase is allowed This one does not have a name. "There's no reason to raise our taxes. There's nothing you're wanting to do that can't be done with taxes already being collected. We're paying too much. Until you can prove that there's a true need, the residents of this county agree to no tax increase. If you want to raise taxes, put it on the ballot and tell us what it's for. Let the residents of Hunt County decide what we're willing to pay for." From Brianna Smith. "Please consider not voting to raise the taxes for Caddo. We moved to Caddo for our four small kids and a tax increase would be a huge burden for us. The taxes are already super high. Please think about the families that can't afford this." From Alastarada. "I've lived in Hunt County since 2002. In fact, Philip Martin was commissioner when I worked for Hunt County back in the early 2000s. The cost of living is outrageous right now. Every bill or tax is going up. What's not going up is a person's income. When a person buys a house, that person should consider all things, including taxes, to make sure it's an appropriate investment and within that person's financial means. The tax increases of the last several years have been absurd. The government is taking almost as much as what a person is making. I will not vote for you if you vote for a tax increase. I will tell everyone in Hunt County not to vote for you. You do not have our best interests in mind if you vote for a tax increase." From Sock Irwin. "I hope this email found you well. I'm writing to express my strong opposition to any proposed increase in tax within our county. As a resident, I understand the need for local revenue, but raising property taxes will impose an additional financial burden on homeowners, many of whom are already facing rising costs of living. Increasing property taxes not only affects working families, but also seniors and those on fixed incomes who may struggle to keep pace with higher payments. In a time when many are trying to recover from economic challenges, the increase could result in undue hardship, potentially driving people from their homes. I respectfully urge you to consider, reconsider any proposal to raise taxes and explore other avenues for generating revenue that would not place this strain on residents. There must be alternative solutions that balance the county's financial needs with the well-being of the community. Thank you for considering my concerns. I look forward to hearing about how the county plans to address this issue while keeping the best interests of its residents at the forefront."
Okay. Sure. Name and address, please, even though we know you.
Yes, sir. Brittany Turner. I'm speaking on my capacity as Hunt County Treasurer. I'm just speaking, I would like to just have a conversation about an item in the budget. I'm gonna read it. It's easier for me to read everything. I would like to once again address the accounts payable function in Hunt County. By now, it's knowledge that the district judges forfeit that function under the auditor's office. Because they forfeit it and because accounts payable is not statutorily required under any office, this becomes the responsibility of the court to designate where it will go. From the proposed budget that was filed, I see that a new department was created to house this function called the accounting department. That being said, I would like to ask the court to reconsider that proposal and put accounts payable under the supervision and budget of the county treasurer for the following reasons. Accounts payable is a financial function and therefore needs to remain under an already established financial office within the county. This helps preserve the checks and balances of county government set by the Texas Constitution. I feel that putting this under the supervision of someone else would decrease efficiency and cause undue confusion due to the following statutes. Local Government Code 113.064 states that all claims must be approved and inspected by the county auditor. Local Government Code 113.041 states that the county treasurer disperses all monies belonging to the county after approval of the commissioner's court. Local Government Code 113.042 and 043 state that the county treasurer endorses all checks and is countersigned by the county auditor. I say that to show the financial authorities lie with the court, the auditor, and the treasurer. Even if you place accounts payable under the supervision of someone else, these authorities will remain. That person wouldn't assume these authorities just because they are a department head overseeing that function. That is where I feel confusion would come in, especially with the accounts payable clerks who are looking for guidance. Who do they go to? If this person can't make decisions regarding their office, why would it be proposed that they oversee it? My background, lastly, my background is in accounts payable. I worked for 15 years in AP before being elected treasurer and I believe that this qualifies me to oversee that function. I can answer staff questions and address issues with substantial knowledge and experience. Plus, I am one of the county's financial authorities established by the Local Government Code. Since the budget, the budget hasn't been adopted, I respectfully ask that you consider my request. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Thank you, Brittany.
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions?
Judge, if we wanted to take her recommendation, my understanding is it was, it would only require amendment to the proposed budget to transfer the salaries, employees and salaries and benefits and such to the department, in this case, her department that we're transferring that, that function to. So I don't believe it'd have a financial impact on, on the budget one way or another, but it would have an efficiency, create an efficiency in the day-to-day operation of governments. And I, I agree, Phil, that it's also an important check and balance that the people who are tasked with ensuring compliance and that proper processes, procedures, and best practices in place for the preservation of the public's funds are followed. I think it makes a lot of sense that any financial task that corresponds to that should be overseen by somebody in that capacity. So I, I think it would be the right thing to do to go ahead and act on her recommendation.
Well, I, I'll try to answer that best I can. The, the district judges oversee the auditor's office, not us. People say that we steal money or whatever. We can't. I mean, we don't, we don't sign checks. We don't look at checks. We don't have any. It takes three, two signatories to approve everything, plus the court has to approve everything. So there's a lot of eyes on it before a check goes out of here. The previous auditor was terminated by the district judges and it was over some, some difficulties of them not understanding. of them not understanding their job and the court's job. And we were not getting the feedback at the time, we thought. And so this court voted to hire somebody that worked for us because we couldn't, we had nothing to say with the auditor's office, and they were the whole accounting department. So with the approval of the district judges, we, and the court, we moved forward with this. So this has been moving forward for months, a year nearly, yeah. And, I mean, we hired a person, started October 1st last year, for that position, and the district judges has insisted that we get that separated. Technically, they're still under the auditor's budget. Going into next year, they would be under another budget that, as you've stated, was correct. So I don't, you know, commissioners, I still, I mean, we said that's what we wanted. We wanted to have somebody working for us. I understand the complications that you addressed. I don't think they're as big a complications as you might think, and that's fair enough. I mean, we can always agree to disagree. But I think this is where the judges wanted us to go, and that's where we wanted to go. Now, if the court wants to change directions, I'm certainly, I'm not trying to say it's the only way we can do it, but I don't think it's as simple as just moving the budget. So I got a question for Daniel. If we don't make a decision tonight, the budget's there, we can still make a change, and the pay could still be the same. We could, it's not going to change the budget at all, dollar-wise. So after further discussion, and if we talk to the judges and decide that everybody's okay with that, then we wouldn't have any problem in just continuing on with the budget as it is. Or do you know the answer to that?
Well, if it's not going to affect the budget, then you can't vote on it tonight because it's not on the agenda to vote on.
I don't think that way.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, you can add it to a later budget, and if it's not going to have any impact on the budget itself, that can be done at any time over the course of the year. It's not directly related to adoption of the budget.
So we can adopt the budget as it is, further discussions, and then work on it.
You're talking about amending the budget, is that correct? Amending the budget?
Well, potentially. I mean, changing the, either through a line item and transfer, you know, which department has that person, can be done through a line item transfer. It's not technically amending the budget. I mean, the budget would stay the same, it would just change the flow.
Line item transfers.
Huh?
Line item transfers.
Yeah.
What you're referring to.
Mark?
It wouldn't change the dollar amount. It would simply, it is part of the budget because it creates, or not, such as the case may be, a new department.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's just part of the budget.
But the question was, and the way I understand you answered it, we don't, the budget's there. If we make a decision that we're combining that in with the treasurer in October or November, we can merge those, but it doesn't change anything. We can merge it if we want to. But I don't feel comfortable after we've made this move with the district judges, and with this court, that we now change it without some comments from the district judges. And I...
Do you mind if I speak to that judge?
Sure.
The, I guess it was my thought that once they forfeit that function, that it became your responsibility.
But they haven't forfeited it yet, not until October 1st.
Understood, understood. Okay.
Still under, all those people are still under them today.
Yes, sir. Yes.
That's my concern.
I agree with that, yes, sir. So, and I guess I, if it moves forward with that, I would want to have, and it gets adopted as proposed, I would want to have a meeting with yourself and the auditor and me so that we can discuss the duties of that department head as it affects both of our offices, so that we can just clarify who has, you know, what authorities and where. So there is, so efficiencies can remain. I would just request that if it is proposed, or if it's adopted as proposed. But I do sincerely request that it is changed under my supervision and not to cause any issues. I just feel, in my capacity as treasurer, and that I feel like it would be remiss if I didn't say that. And not that I, if I'm outvoted in that because it is the court's decision, once that function becomes floating and it becomes the court's responsibility to decide, and it gets outvoted, then that's the process. And that's exactly what we do, and I'm not going, I would not make any other problems. I just, it's more a conversation that I wanted to have, so.
I'm good with all that, as long as we got to include at least administrative judge or both of them in that conversation.
Yes, sir.
Daniel, to be clear, you're saying tonight we could not vote to transfer those employees to a different department out of this proposed department?
Transferring employees between departments is not on the agenda. So is this part of a brand-new part of the budget?
It would totally change the budget.
Okay. Then yes, you can vote on that. If it's part of a new part of the budget, you can vote on it if you want to do that before you talk with the judges. I would certainly advise you not to do that.
I don't want to.
Say that again in that last...
I would advise you not to do that until you talk with the judges.
May I ask this question? I understand that the, your district judges are over the auditor. In actuality, are they actually over the treasurer?
No.
Okay. And the person that's coming in, basically, to change over, basically, would be under the county judge. Am I correct?
Well, it'd be subject to the commissioner's court. Yeah.
Yes, I believe I'm correct.
But, Philip, the thing we're not grasping, that was an agreement with the court and with the district judges to make that move. The district judges could say now with that, they might refuse and just bring it back in. And I don't want to step on their toes. I think we have to go to them and make sure they're okay with either moving in a different direction than they've been told, or they may have the option to pull it back in. I think either way, with, as long as we had the budget money in there, I feel like that we should be able to handle that after the budget year. We can approve the budget, move forward, and we can still handle it later.
You definitely can change it later.
Yeah.
So Brittany, what you're asking is to move the accounts payable department, and you'd be the department head?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you want to do?
I would like, the request is moving the payables department, which is already housed in my office, to, under the supervision of the treasurer, which would also be included in the budget of the treasurer. Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Mike Scherz, clear?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Everybody, you okay, Mark? Satisfied, or what?
I'm still not sure, unless there's a concern that the district judges don't want it housed in the treasurer's department. I'm not sure why we wouldn't just make that change tonight, but...
We spent a lot of time, over a lot of months, talking about this with the district. I did, and of course, our new auditor also, and this is something that they wanted done, and this is the direction it went. And we hired somebody to do that. And not that the person has to go anywhere, there's still a place for them, and in one spot or the other, it's just not as what we hired her to do. And that's okay. But we still have, I don't think we can exclude the district judges in this conversation since they were a big part of the conversation to start it, start with.
I understand.
Okay. Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. We had somebody in front of you. Get to you. I think you are, Daniel Stowall? Yeah, come on forward. Is that Perry, Daniel? Yeah.
Perry Daniel Stowall.
No relationship to me. That I know of.
No. You know, after hearing, I wasn't going to speak, but after hearing the Treasury Department speak, and with all the red flags that have come up recently in this court, concerning this court raises additional red flags, I wouldn't think that you would want an accounting department underneath you, accounts payable, to be directly answered to y'all after what's all happened. I would think that you would want that to be away from y'all. So I would suggest that we follow what they're asking for right here, to keep the rap off you. Because personally, the attention that, you know, I've only been brought to my attention over the last two weeks, and I stand for what's right and what's right, and what's wrong is what's wrong. And I believe that most men are, have good intentions, but also realize that over time, power and money can corrupt good intentions. And I'm a firm believer in that. That doesn't mean you're a bad person, anybody that it happens to, but you could always make a comeback on it. But I would think right now, there's been a lot of red flags raised. And I would suggest auditing our current budgets. Where's this money going? Be transparent. All this money that we're allocating in different places, I have no problem with a person in charge of this court to make what you're making, because it's a headache, but do it right. And if you're tired of doing it right because you've been doing it too long, anybody at any department you're in, let somebody else come in and fix it. Do what's right for the people that you're responsible for, and just do what's right. And right now, I would say, everything she's saying, as far as that goes, I would really think that that would be the way to go. I would not want to bring in somebody underneath me that's responsible of signing checks, sending money out to the people that...
Accounting department will not sign checks. Still, the treasurer and auditor only signs checks. So they'll still both be reviewing anything that happens in there. All it's going to be is a payable, it's a processing center. It's not anybody that's doing anything else. They don't, they're not issuing checks, they're not signing checks.
I understand. We all understand what I'm getting at.
I understand.
Okay.
But just for clarity, they're not signing checks.
I understand they're not signing checks.
And we're not signing checks.
But they're in the department, they're right underneath you, and we can, it all, we all know how it works. So do the right thing. And again, like I said last time, evaluate yourself in the mirror, and if something's happened and you need to evaluate, or you're just getting tired, just move, let somebody else do it that's going to come in and audit the system, and make a checklist of, you know, okay, well, where's this money going? All right, this week, we're going to work on figuring out all these old systems. Are they still practical? Is this right? Go to the next one, the next week. I mean, just do the job. Don't just keep bringing in more money to spend more money so you can go play golf or go home with your family. You have a job to do. That's all I ask you to do.
Thanks, sir. And others? Carissa Sanders.
Okay, so, I'm not really, first, I'm not a public speaker.
My lady.
I'm not a public speaker, and I don't really understand all these things. But what this lady said, and the fact that y'all are about approval of line transfers, it's on the agenda, correct? Now, if I understand correctly, y'all have created a new department and a budget for it, but you took it out of...
No.
Out of another place, or you just created it?
Took it out of the auditor's budget.
Out of the auditor's budget. Okay.
With permission of the district judges.
And are the district judges over all of that?
Yes. They're over the auditor's department.
Okay.
They hire and fire the auditor, and they run, they're overseeing of that office.
And if you have this accounting, who's going to be over that?
Over the court. There'll be a...
Y'all would?
Yes.
So this, instead of having everything in one place, you're going to have, from what I understand, three different, or is it two?
Two different locations.
Okay.
There are already two locations.
Huh?
There's already two locations.
Okay, but why not just, if it's an inline transfer, why can't you just do it now? Because here's my thing, I think I've told every one of you, we already have trust issues with you. And I know you can say, oh, yeah, we can do this, and y'all seem to agree that it's easy to do, but you're going to do a budget and say, we'll get to that next month or the month after. But how do we really know you will? So why not just do it now?
We can't, we can't change the dollar amount.
Okay.
But...
You can do a line transfer.
But we can move, if the decision's made with the court and the district judges, then we could move it to something, to another department, or we could continue to pay those people out of where they're currently at and put them over there.
I still don't know if I understand that, but you are going to do it?
I could talk to the, I don't, I'm saying the district judges got to say so, and they were part of driving the boat, so that's all I know. I can't answer that until we talk to them. Thank you.
Well, the public's benefit, I'd like to thank Brittany for speaking today and point out she's been before this court, speaking before about this issue. This is not the first time she's addressed it.
So we'll move on to talking about the budget, commissioners. We had two things left over from last session to talk about, and one was the increase in supplement pay to the volunteer fire departments and increase in the retirees. Any thoughts, recommendations? We originally had said, we had a meeting, we all agreed that we would give the volunteer firefighters $500 a month increase, which is a little over 10%, and they were asking for 25, and we just gave them, we just voted on spending about $2 million on new radios for them when they get, when they're getting a new radio system with AMR. So we got to...
Judge, the, you know, 500 is certainly better than nothing. When we discussed that, it wasn't a final decision, it was just mentioned as something we might pencil in, we'd come back to it. I think, to me, I think it's a needed increase. I know we're paying money for radio, but that's because we're building a new radio system, and they need to be on it, and we need to be able to communicate, and they need to be dispatched, and need to improve the response times across the county for the benefit of property and lives of our citizens. So I, I think the 25% increase was going to be about $200,000, if I recall the math off the top of my head, about $199,000. To me, that seems a pretty small increase for the increased costs they have and for the vital services they perform across the county. So I think it's something we should include, and we know we have the fund balance to cover
Anybody else?
I think we need to shoot, still shoot for around that 10 and 1/2% personally.
Yeah, we'll just pick into the mic, please.
I think we need to shoot for the, like, around the 10 and 1/2%, which is about 500 a month. I mean, we're talking about cutting budgets, we're talking about saving money here and there. I'm not going to say they don't need the money, but there's other departments that need money that's been cut also. But, you know, like I said, they just, we just okayed about $2.5 million for the radio system. I know we upgraded the radios and stuff, that they need to be on that. But still, the fact is, we spent roughly $2.5 million on that. So I'm good with going to $500 a month increase per, for every department, 13 departments. It's my opinion, but I'm just one vote.
That's about a $78,000 increase, I think, some math on that.
That's a, that's a 25%. Bump it up to $6,000 a month.
Yes, well, it's, yeah, but 6,000 times 13, 78,000 total to the budget, at 500. And Mark said, what, about 200 on...
I think it was 199 when I did the math a couple weeks ago. 13 departments, you say?
That's what I understand. Somebody correct me if that's not correct.
We should have brought a math person with us.
What did you want to go up, how much were you trying to raise it? Recommended?
The request of 25%. I'm sorry, I remember how to calculate it. So on the, it's somewhere here in the budget, the, took the amount in that budget line item and multiplied it by the...
Get 187, 200.
How much?
How much?
187,200 is what I get. 4,800 a month, up 25% times 12 months, times 13 departments. I get 187,200 if I didn't do something wrong.
If we were off by a few pennies, I'm sure they'd be okay with that.
I'm sure they would.
That, I think, I think we've made our positions clear down here. Are you wanting to vote on these questions as we discuss them, Judge?
Before we approve the budget.
Or the whole thing?
What this item's about. So any changes to the budget before we approve it, we have to get that straightened out so that we can move forward and vote on the budget.
I don't want a cop discussion, but if-
Your advice, basically, we have two gentlemen talking in reference to 25% versus 10% or actually 10 and 1/2, I believe that's correct. And I do understand, because I've been trying to get the radios to where we could pay for them, and also the ISDs that considered them also. I suggest we split that, try to go 15% in reference to that, and I believe, how much would that be?
Give me a second.
15% what I'm looking at.
That's $720 a month. Times 12 would be 8640 for each department. Times 13, that's 112,320.
I believe, in actuality, I can understand, basically, they do need the money. We have spent a lot. I'm trying to compromise in reference, because I feel that some would be for it and don't want to lose it all. So basically, I'm saying 15%. In fact, I had talked to a fire department this last week, and they said, thank you, thank you, thank you, y'all are considering 500. Well, we need to help them all we can, so I would like to see a vote in reference to 15%.
Is that a motion then, or what are you doing?
I'm making a motion, I'll second it. Philip?
Wait a moment, does that gentleman?
Hang on.
He can't hang on. I'm making a motion, we increase at 15%.
I'll second it.
Okay. And you going to come forward? We got a motion and a second. I'll hear, we'll hear the comments.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to say that one of the reasons we asked for 25% was, we had our last raise in 2021, and before that, it had been 20 years since we had had a raise. In the last three years, I have Campbell Fire received a grant for a truck. We had a quote one year for 280, it was about 280,000, or, sorry, 380,000 for the truck we quoted. One year later, it had gone up 45% and was over 400,000. So you can't say 25%. Things haven't gone up 25%. We've had maintenance bills that were 13,000, $15,000 bills to fix trucks. I appreciate the consideration of any, any kind of raise, but that was why we were shooting for 25%. Things have gone up, and on average, it's been 25% or more. So, thank, thank you.
May I say something, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
May I? Understand this, that I have supported fire departments all these years, and those two times that y'all received it, I made the motion. Did you know that? Yes. The thing about it is, this right here, we're trying to do the best we can. It took us five months to decide whether we could get radios to y'all, which were very much needed. And through the newsletter, news and all this, it seems as though it's very important for, in reference to being able to communication, to talk with each other. What I'm doing is, I believe 15% would possibly be negotiated, and that's why I've made that. I want y'all to thrive and do the best you can. In fact, at one time, we had a fund that we set aside for anything over 30 calls. You remember that?
Still have it.
And in actuality, you didn't even use the money. You remember it turned back. We want to help and support you all we can. There's, that's, that's true right here. And I appreciate the other commissioners' remarks, but we need to settle it, and I believe that's, I sincerely believe it's fair.
Philip, since I've been here, we've been paying the runs. I don't know if there was a time when it, we didn't, but we, we- I don't know but-
That's right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No, on the basis it's not enough.
All right, so we got three ayes, and I didn't vote, so I'll be at the four and the one then? To approve. All right, so when we make, when we'll go to the next one, but when we pass the budget, don't let me forget, we got to add that in on the motion to approve the budget. The retirees, you know, have been furnished with the plan before, so the public, the three options, the plan that we have, we can raise, give the retirees a 1%, a 2%, or 3% raise. And we have two options. We can do that and pay it upfront, or we have rates that will increase. And so I'll read those for the public. So everybody, a 1% raise, one-time pay would be 459,572. And a 2% raise would be 919,144. A 3% raise would be 1,378,717. The rate increases would be on a 1%, 1%, the plan, if it stays the same, the rate is 10.67, it'll be 10.86 on 1%, 11.05 at 2%, and 11.24% for the 3%. It would increase our, let's see. They don't give us a dollar amount for the year, what it would, biddy, biddy, those percentages of our payroll is what it would be. Commissioners, you have that in front of you? I said it last time, I'll talk, if y'all don't want to talk on that, I'm conflicted. We haven't given raises in, I think, since 2009, 2007.
2008.
2008, okay.
And that was the first time that I heard it done, because I made the motion, and basically, we got people back in those times, were not making as much money as they are now. And we got some people in there, and basically, I worked with them, and they're having problems. They're having problems.
So, and so, up until 2020 or so, there was, the only raises anybody got during that period of time was $1,000 or $1,500 apiece a year for kind of a COLA raise. So the raises weren't much. I'm conflicted, because those that have retired recently, yes, they'll need an increase, but they're already making a lot more. The ones that retired 20 years ago aren't making very much, and 1% or 2% or 3%, I don't know that it's really going to help them that much. I wish, I wish we could look at it and ask the plan people if we could make it where we give those that retired some number of years ago, even make it five years and longer, they get a bigger raise, and then the ones that are current. Because I think the ones that retired, like Philip, you're saying, retired a long time ago, they really need, probably need the help, more than somebody maybe that retired recently. And I can be wrong on it, but that's the way I look at it, and I don't know if that's even practical or not to do. I don't know if the plan would allow us to do it.
Honestly, just don't know whether that would actually be legal either. I mean, I'm being sincere.
I am too. I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I don't know the answer. I hadn't had a chance to try to call and, you know.
Understand, and I want to, basically, I want to, this is a one-time deal. It's not from now on.
Well, we can choose either way. We can choose to have the rate increased forever, or we can pay it one time. Originally, I had said, if we're going to do it, I'd pay it one time, but I made that comment when we had a balanced budget. Now we're 4.4 million in the hole, so if we want to do the other, that's, we might, I might want to reconsider that recommendation.
Well, I would think we could at least, that's what I'm saying, I didn't recommend it every year deal. I think it's a one-time thing, and then we can look and see where we're at in the future in reference to it.
No, the one-time would be, I mean, the rates would increase, and, but the one-time would be pay, pay the required amount of money upfront, that would take it, take care of the raises that, to the retirees that get it at this point in time, and then we don't have to fund that any longer. So it's not an obligation, the county will have to keep paying in the future-
That's right.
... the budget in the future. I'd rather protect the budget in the future and take care of it. If we can afford it, I'd rather afford it now.
Judge, go ahead. Well, I would personally prefer the upfront approach, the one-time payment, and I know it's been said, but just to reiterate that, this is a one-time payment into the system that we don't, we're not obligated to continue paying year after year. It's not the same thing as giving a raise or COLA to an employee that you're then going to be employing for 10 years and incurring that additional obligation over that time. So I personally would favor the approach of the one-time lump sum payment rather than the rate increase.
I'm in favor of that as well. If we're going to do it to 3%, we do it one time, it's one and done.
So the motion, he made a motion to do 3% and fund it out of this year's budget.
Second that motion.
All right, any other discussion?
We may have a question.
Okay. Okay, come forward, state your name, please. Name and address.
My name's Cody Garcia. I'm at 1006 Sale Street. I just want to ask y'all a question. How long have y'all had time to think about this decision, just in general, as well as the other decisions that y'all are bringing up today?
We first talked about this back in July.
July, okay. And it seems like y'all aren't really, you know, dedicated to what decision you're making, and it's been since July, and it seems like y'all aren't necessarily confident in your decisions, or that y'all have researched it enough. Y'all are looking at, for instance, gentleman here is talking about, or, excuse me, you were talking about, making it to where people that retired at earlier times that are suffering more, are needing the money more, whereas the people that retired recently maybe do not need it. Could y'all have discussed that earlier, before y'all came here?
I presented it to the court at the request of HR, because they were over that part of it, and nobody was willing to discuss it, so I thought it was a dead deal, and didn't move forward on it, and then Mr. Martin brought it up, I think, two meetings ago.
Who was, who was not willing to discuss it?
Nobody. I asked him if we wanted to consider it going forward, and nobody was wanting to discuss it, so it just dropped.
I know everyone's kind of in a mindset of whiff them, what's in it for me? But I'm thinking about what's in it for us, like-
I understand. And we've already paid, our, our retirement plan is that we put, employees put in seven, the county matches-
And it's not just about the retirement, it's about?
I understand. Let me finish. So our retirement is, we put in seven, county match is at 200%. So we've already, I mean, for all of us and previous people, we've already had 200% put into their retirement from the taxpayers.
Okay. And just as, for instance, you were saying, the 42 million, that's currently set aside, y'all are going to be using that completely, correct, for everything that needs to be done, for renovations, for developers to basically not have to travel as far to get where they need to go to get approvals? Is that correct? As a, for instance?
Not developers, it's, it's for everything, well, the home buyers. We have a lot of people just coming in and build a house on their land.
Okay.
And they have to go through the process.
What's the percentage of people living in Hunt County that are home buyers?
Home builders, or-
You said developers, I thought, on your first meeting, but you're saying home buyers now?
I may have misspoke. I mean, it's for the public. I mean, we get complaints from the public about having to come over here and go back over there, and also putting it under one roof would be more convenient for the public that are taxpayers, who are trying to build a house or move a trailer on a place. They have to come get a 911 address, have to get a septic permit.
This form here is not detailed, just so you know. This doesn't say enough of what y'all are discussing. Y'all actually need to put it on the computer or something to where we know what y'all are talking about. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, where were we? Any other questions?
We had a motion and a second.
All right, we ready to vote? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, anything else tonight for the budget part? All right.
I'm sorry, Judge, I missed that. Was that, what was the question? Could you repeat that?
Do we have anything else to discuss before we start talking about approving the budget? Those are the only two things I had down from last time that we were going to make change. We made all the other changes last time, these are the two changes this time that were still left. Do you have something else?
Judge, I think originally at our September 3 meeting, and again, on September 10th, have both passed out the court recommendations that I was making for cuts to the budget. I'm happy to revisit that again, if there's any appetite to cut the budget, but I, for the benefit of those who haven't been at all the meetings, we've had an ongoing discussion about, about, about this, and how it to do with the fund balance and how to review it. My position is that there's not a firm plan in place for almost all of the fund balance and ARPA money and capital improvement money, and that, absent that, we need to table major expenditures from, for capital improvement projects, and develop a capital improvement plan, which takes all the different needs of the county, which are many, puts them into one place, and allows us to review them and prioritize them, and put dollar amounts on them and plan for future budgets. So absent that, I'm, I think we've got a lot of fund balance available that on both means we should not, and should not have, should not now, and cannot now, but should not ever have been discussing or contemplating a tax increase. And also means that we have adequate funds, more than adequate funds, to do things like bump through the fire departments, volunteer fire departments. We're not paying anybody there, that's just their vehicle repair and maintenance and gas money there. And so we should absolutely, as we just voted to do, I'm happy to say, increase the, make that extra contribution to the retirees for them. And so, I, you mentioned earlier, there's a full something deficit, and obviously, we technically added to that with the decisions we've made. I think every decision we have, we make has to be made in conjunction with the others. So I think, and I have, we have, we have talked about it in this court, on this camera, for people to go back and look, I think there is a number of line items that we should cut significantly. I passed those out before, I'll pass them out again, I'm ready for that. Was ready to talk about them again last week, but we had to hold off on that in light of the developments there. But I have in front of me, and we don't have to adopt them or approve them all, but I think about, just in front of me, 2.6 million, and what I think are, would be good cuts, right cuts. Regardless of the tax rate we raise, we adopt-
Excuse me, would you repeat that again, please?
Regardless of the rate we adopt, the citizens of this county want to see us using their tax funds effectively, and there is a number of line items in the budget that, if you look at the historical trends, are not supported, the requested budget is not supported by the historical trends. They're high, and they need to be cut. I'm happy to pass these out again, as I've done before. to pass these out again, as I've done before. Yeah, these are spare copies of the first handout. There's not enough for all of you, but that's, that's been updated. That's, that one's a lower number. I recommend we make additional cuts instead as well. And Judge, I'd point out that if the concern is to maintain enough of a cash reserve to fund these capital improvement projects we want to do, I think we would be highly motivated to make additional cuts to the budget to preserve that fund balance for those purposes. That's public information. Anybody can email me, and I'll send it to them. There's additional handout in which I recommended to the court, I think it was again at our September 3 meeting, which is the first opportunity we had to discuss the proposed budget with time to, to review it, in which I recommended that we could even make, I forget what number I put in that, I may have dropped the number down to 800,000, but I recommended that we could do some things to help bring the tax rate down by taking unrestricted ARPA money, which we have, according to the last handout, about 6.8 million of, and use that to supplement the road and bridge materials budgets for new upgrades and major repairs and rehabilitation of roads. We could take a certain amount from our budgets, cut it, and then offset that with an even greater amount, if we wanted to, and deliver an actual service that people need, and we hear all the time that people need, which is better roads. The money is there for those uses and purposes, and I think we ought to use it for that purpose. And as you'll see from most of those line items, it's just line items, budgets, where it's not even a cut, it's simply cutting the increase. Now, it's not true of all of them, but that's with a lot of them.
Give us a minute. I'll let you here in a second. If you'll hopefully come in, give us a second.
Even with these cuts, we would still have a contingency line item amount of, I think it was, if I remember off the top of my head, 1.75 million, which is a very healthy contingency, in my opinion, which is a cut from 2 million, but we haven't even used a half million of that in the current budget year, which to me says we have too much there. So, we need to use that money, we need to make some cuts, to offset not only this year's tax rate, but next year's tax rate.
I'd like to explain something to somebody, if I may. Everything goes to zero, basically, with all these other offices involved. The only one that doesn't go and that's carried over in actuality are the precincts, 1, 2, 3, 4. Once money's put in there, it cannot actually be removed in reference to some of that. So, we have to carry in which the 15%, this is our own policy, to where we can operate between, between October the 1st and January before money starts to coming in. In reference to all this other, in reference to cutting here, there, and all this, basically, that money is not done away with. Basically, it's put into the next budget. I was mainly looking in reference to forensic analysis and all this. There are several years ago, up to several years ago, we were not being, having to pay for forensic analysis in reference with DPS. Do you all remember that? Then, all of a sudden, they did start charging the county, and then we had to pay for it. Now, I don't know what the status of it is right now or not, but, but this money that's here, basically, if anything's left, it's carried over. I think we had an elevator that had been fixed here lately, and basically, that was a lot of money. But my whole point is-
There's three of them.
You never know.
The Exchange Building, one at the Sheriff's-
How much?
There was three different ones. We had to, we had to, we're in the process of replacing the two at the Exchange Building, but the Exchange Building maintenance and, and even the main, the residency, the contingency over there that Mark's suggesting, we lower $300,000. That's not taxpayer money. That, that fund is totally funded by the leases of the tenants in that building, and we pay for all the things out of that building through the revenue it generates, and additionally, we, we budget two, two, two or three full-time people that don't just work over there, they work across the whole county, so that we do get benefits from those workers being able to work in other parks of the county. So, that one does not change the tax, the 300,000 doesn't change anything in our current budget, because it's not within our, our budget.
Judge, the whole building is the taxpayer's building.
It is, but it's not, it's not affecting the tax rate.
And any, any revenue generated from it can be played, placed in the fund balance to offset the general revenue in a budget. The recommended change was not to any employees' stipends or salaries.
Oh, I understand that, but. Do you like to come up on everybody's thinking?
I live at 1825 FM 36 North. I spoke last week. I didn't want to speak tonight, but when you buy a car, you go to get the best deal. Am I right? At least, I would hope that you would. Well, in our budget, I would think we ought to do the best deal. And what I find a lot of times with budgets, is that often people will have a budget, let's say, let's just say your budget's $1,000 a year, and what they'll try to do is they'll try to spend all of that budget so they can ask for 1,100 the next year. And I'm afraid that's what's happening a lot of times, is we're trying to spend it all, and then we want to ask for a little more every year, and they ask for a little more every year. I'm with Mark. If we, if there's room in there, why ask for more? Why not be more efficient with what we've got? Wouldn't you do that with your house, in your own household budget? You would do that. And I, I think he's right. I, I think that you need to go down, I think, really, to be honest with you, I don't think you guys are ready for a budget.
Well, for clarity, I think what he was saying is with the historical, they haven't spent it. They didn't, I would say, at least half of the departments asked for the same thing they asked for last year, and historically, they have not always spent it. But because they haven't, they, we've got good stewards of their money, but they still know that they got things that can come up, and they keep their budgets pretty consistent, year in and year out, and they, there are a lot of governments that do that, exactly what you're talking about. I've never seen that up here. It may be here, but I haven't seen it. I see that it's pretty consistent, and they generally stay under their budget, and they don't generally ask for any more money.
Mr. Ledford, I would second that. I haven't seen a lot of that, and in fact, you can look everybody's department heads-up budgets, and I wish you would, because a lot of them are doing a great job managing their budget, and they deserve your thanks.
Sure, come on in.
Jeff Phillips, 603 Meek Drive here in Greenville. These have been entertaining, for sure. I've been here the last, last two and this one as well. So, just a comment on just the general, just the budgeting process in, in general. I think I mentioned last week that I have run budgets on four continents and five countries over the past 30 years at my job. I'm now retired, but there's a lot of questions, and if you've been trying to do a budget since July and you can't get these guys to talk to you, that's a problem.
Yes, sir.
It's either with these individuals, or it's either with you, and I, or, or, you know, completely. There's a lot of questions on this budget, and I see some folks scrambling. Is this the first time that you've seen his recommendations?
It's about double the list he gave us a month ago or something.
Well, we've been talking about, you've been talking about this since July. I don't understand how you can come and vote for a budget without doing the due diligence.
Yes.
It's like with the, with the increases for the retirees. Fine, well, I don't know enough to be educated on that, but what concerns me is no one talked to the plan administrator to see if it's even possible to give folks that retired 20 years ago a higher rate than someone that retired two years ago. It might not even be legal, I don't know, but that's something that you guys should have already done, not talking about it now and asking a question two hours before you vote. So, but what you did is you, you gave an increase at 3%. What did add, about a million or so, 900,000?
Million three.
What's the offset to that? Has anybody talked about that, or is this what this list is here? So, it's okay to give money somewhere else, but what is the offset? If I spend money somewhere in my home, I have to have an offset.
Right.
Somewhere else. The easiest thing in the world is to spend someone else's money. And what I, what I see on this is it's high over historic trends. I don't know if it's accurate or not. I, I don't know enough about this budget, but all I see is a list, and if you keep budgeting the same amount of money, but it's not being spent, that does affect the rate that you collect from the taxpayers.
That's right.
That could all be reduced, and you may not be at a $4 million deficit, if the line items are all right-sized. So, my biggest concern is, it looks like you're still trying to figure out the budget two hours before it gets voted on.
Yep.
That, that's a problem for me. I don't understand it. As a citizen that's concerned, and I don't even know if it's possible, I would love to come in and help you guys put a budget together, and I would volunteer right now, today, and I'm doing nothing tomorrow. I'm a retired guy, and if you have at-large positions, I would love to come in and just sit down and talk to you and ask questions.
We don't, we didn't, we had three budget meetings with nothing on the agenda but the budget. We didn't call it a workshop, but that's all we, four years ago, it's the same, whether we have a budget workshop or this meeting tonight, it's the same requirements. It has to be in public, it has to have all the same public notices, and it has an agenda on it. And the only thing on those three meetings was for this, for the, we only talked about the, the individual employees that were requesting individual raises. We don't talk about, we cannot talk about an individual salary in the public.
But when did you talk about all this?
Which, what are you talking about?
Everything that we're discussing tonight, you did not talk about in a session.
Okay. Mark, I, you know, I'm sure there's some of these things, if I had, if you'd given it to me tonight, earlier, instead of now, and a lot of them, but a lot of them I can't agree with. You're wanting to cut GASB compliance in my office, $8,000. That's a requirement we have to pay to have somebody come in and audit our GASB.
We can cut that off the list?
The, the change, I don't remember the changes in community, community development being on the last list. I don't remember the visiting judges for the county court at laws. That's, I think they have to, the judges that are retired, that service, visiting judges, I think they get paid $1,000 a day. That's two and a half days for one court and three for the other day. They just assume they know they're going to be sick occasionally or have a conflict. I know originally, when Joel Littlefield took, took office, he had to recuse himself on several cases because he'd been the county attorney, and he couldn't hear, couldn't sit on the bench for some of those cases he'd been involved in. So, it was higher at one point in time. I don't know that that makes sense to change those. The forensic analysis says 100,000. That was a request from the district attorney for marijuana cases a few years ago. The state wasn't doing them anymore. He wanted to go out on certain cases and hire a private lab to do it. The occasion has not risen in a couple of years. I know you and I both talked to him, and we can reduce that some. He's still not sure that he can totally eliminate it. At least, that's what I, my discussion with him was. There's several maintenance repairs at the courthouse and Johnson Street. There, you know, all these buildings are 100 years old. We don't know when we're going to have a problem with something, like, just like Phillips said. We had to spend 700,000 at the Exchange Building for two new elevators, because we had no choice. The sheriff's one's been broke for months, and we can't seem to get it, get it fixed. This may have to be repaired at some time. We got, you know, we got old facilities, and, you know, it's hard to budget. We don't spend it if we don't have to spend it, and sometimes we budget things. You questioned last year about, or year before last, about the garden center over here. We had some amount of money in there, and I told you that, you know, you wanted to eliminate it or reduce it a lot, and I said, well, we got a gazebo over there that the public built, and it's ours on our land, and it had structural issues. Well, this year, it's about to fall over, and we've had to brace it, but we still hadn't had time for our people to get over there and, and work on it. They've ordered some, whoever built it didn't put any braces across the top of it, and now they've had to order some steel pipe or something to connect, and then they're going to pull it back together and try to save it. But again, we don't know. Things like that happen. We knew it happened sometime, but we couldn't get it fixed before it happened. I don't, you, sheriff can address $46,000 in training in schools to reduce from law enforcement and-
And that was coded as an inquiry, Judge. I mean, it put the dollar amount on there, but it was, the color code is an inquiry.
And the $400,000 enterprise and out of general administration, that went in there last time. We keep that in there because we still haven't replaced all of the vehicles, and we don't know which, which ones that were, we got several that are still old. It's going to have to be replaced at some time once somebody's ready to. The lobbying, I discussed that one.
A lot of departments don't use enterprise.
You what now?
A lot of departments don't use the enterprise program.
Some of the commissioners don't. Everybody else pretty much does. The sheriff bought some out of his commissary money for his transport from the jail. All of the sheriffs are bought from it. Most of the other departments have vehicles from enterprise. The, where was it? The lobbying influence, the state says if any of us go to Austin to talk to our representatives or go down there, anything that we do, we have to report it as in a lobbying and influence budget to go down there, and-
All these items were in the first handout.
Not all of them. I don't, there's, it was one page or all over a page, and it's two pages.
The ones we've discussed just now.
I don't have it with me, so I'd have to go back and look.
Wasn't the capital murder expense something else that we talked about knocking down some?
Yes. Yes.
I was looking at that, and basically, in 2022, it's five hundred and eight thousand. We entered, I think this needs to be put in there. We entered into an agreement to hire a, what, a defender in reference to that?
We joined a public defender for capital murder cases.
Yes. But the thing about it is if there's more than one person, if there's two, then they're just going to pay for that defense of one, and we'll have to take care of the other one in reference to that.
Well, that's still in there at a little higher amount because the, we had an individual in our jail about nine years that committed a heinous murder of two people. It took him, it took us nine years to get him found guilty and sentenced to death, and he fired our public defenders. We, I think he fired two or three other attorney firms. He worked the system. We spent a lot of money on it. We didn't know where it's going to end. It's now been, I think that was finalized a year and a half ago, maybe two years. And we had, going to a death, a capital murder with a death penalty, it's an automatic appeal process. So, we already had our other law firms to represent us. That, it just keeps going. So, till we know what the finalization, that cost is going to be, that needs to stay up to make sure we have the money to cover it, and then we can cut it. Once we get him fully adjudicated, that will be an easy one to deal with.
I asked this the last, one of the last meetings. Road materials will have taken out eight hundred thousand and putting eight hundred thousand back into the precincts out of ARPA money? If we do that, I may be wrong, I'm asking the question, but we lower, that would help lower the tax rate this year, but for next year, where do we gain that eight hundred thousand back to go back into the precincts? Are you going to have to get that out of tax money? Or you possibly have to raise the tax rate? How does that, how's that going to look? Or can you answer that?
Oh, if it's paid one time out of somewhere else and you lower the budget, then next year, we'd have to increase the budget to put it back in, or the precincts would be without that money. I mean, to me, it's, we always stated, our, most of our departments, not really, I think all, I don't know one that abuses our system. They don't spend it if they don't have to. They need the money. We're at four point four million dollar deficit budget. If we don't spend it, we get to put it in the fund balance. It's not adding anything to the cost. There's not four million in here that would drive it to where we could lower the rate more than the no new revenue. I think you said two million or something. We're still two million short of being, to where we just get back to an even position. So, I don't, I don't think that if these, some of these that you want to cut, I think some of them won't get spent, and I think some probably will end up spending every bit of that. And I just don't, I'm not smart enough to pick out which one will be which. So, I don't, personally, I don't have any heartburn in having it there because I know our people have been responsible. We're already in a deficit budget, huge. It's not, we can cut all those, and we're still going to have a deficit budget. And we still spend the, we'll spend it down.
Subsequently less deficit, though.
Be less, but again, it's...
I mean, Judge, I just don't agree with that approach. If we disagree, we disagree.
I don't say we can approve the budget tonight, and we're about out of time, so... Let us try to get through this without any more interruptions. If you can talk afterwards, if you don't mind, but let's get a little further here. I'm trying to let you all talk. I'm trying to. Commissioners, what do y'all think? I mean, y'all need to give some input.
If we're uncomfortable with this two-six list, we can ditch it and go with the one-seven list I passed out on September third. Judge, I think if, if the position you're taking is that it's not going to really harm anything if we just leave this like it is because we're already at a deficit, and a lot of this won't be spent anyway, so it'll go into the fund balance for next year, I think you need to, people need to have some kind of confidence that we're next year going to go through these line items one by one by one and look closely at each of them and bring down any excess fluff spending. That is the concern. I've brought this up multiple meetings consecutively, and there just doesn't seem to be an appetite for it. But at some point, we as a governing body have to place some kind of limiting principles on ourselves and stick to them. And again, I would point out that if the concern is to make sure we have enough fund balance to get these capital improvement projects done, why aren't we bending over backwards to reduce this deficit? Because the bigger, the greater the deficit, the more it comes out of fund balance. It doesn't make sense. These are not new suggestions. Some of the specific ones might be, but the idea, we're really, we're not really disagreeing over line item, you know, whether or not to cut one hundred thousand dollars or seventy-five thousand dollars on the forensic analysis line item. We're disagreeing whether we need to make any cuts at all. And so, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
Anybody else wish to share? Sorry, y'all come up and talk while there.
Thank you again, Jeff Phillips, 603 Meek Drive here in Greenville. And Mark, I guess I asked a question. Is this, is that a consolidated list from all the precincts or just from your precinct, what you're suggesting? That's, you looked at the entire budget for everyone?
It's all departments.
All departments?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think it, I think the optics here, if there's a, for us out here and everyone watching online is, if there's something that's not needed in the budget, especially if it's under historical run rate for, I don't know how many years historical is, but if it's under that, to lower that, even if it's a fraction of pennies, we're moving in the right direction. And then we get to, and then the optics to the county is, hey, we're going to start moving this to right-size this budget. Again, someone else said earlier, you shouldn't be making money. And I know we have to have contingency. Hundred percent agree with that. Hundred percent agree with it. But we need to make sure that contingency is something that we can all afford, and that you're actually spending that money. So, I would ask you to take a look at these budgets, and if you agree with them, let's remove them, and let's reduce the rate. If you don't, then I'd like to hear why you don't. And actually, someone other than, there's one, two, three, five of you, you know, in the other precincts. Do you need the money? If you do, then let's go on record and find out why you need it. If you don't, then silence means you don't need it, so let's cut it.
Do I have to give my address and all that stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
Before I did the paper? Okay. Can y'all hear me? All right. So, I want to point out something. Oh, I'm sorry. Carissa Sanders, 2400 St. Wall Street, Greenville, Texas. So, I want to point out something. Mr. Harrison, we spoke, and you told me that while y'all had discussed numbers, you hadn't actually seen the budget until right before the original meeting where y'all were going to vote on that budget. Is that correct?
No, we've got the budget...
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth is when we actually got the budget, the detailed budget.
Okay. I recall our conversation, and you said that y'all had not seen it until he had just given it to you, because I asked you if you were going to vote on it that day. And you said, no, we needed to, I needed to dig in and go through it, find out and see it and look at all the numbers. And I said, so if it had come up for a vote, would you have voted for it? Well, again, I just don't know. And then I spoke to Mark, who told me about y'all's budget meetings. Been going on since when, Ms. Judge Stovall?
June, late June was the first meeting, I think.
Okay. So, and we are all here watching, you gentlemen and ladies. You are here, too. And I hear Mark throwing out proposals and ideas to cut a budget, and I see Judge, I would say, kind of disagreeing. And then you three not saying a thing, except for Mr. Martin occasionally. So, has this been what your budget meetings has looked like?
For clarity on the budget, and why I got it August fifteenth. The Tax Appraisal Office is not required to give us the values until July 31st. We got it probably maybe the last week of July. Then we have to furnish some information, which the Auditers Department does and the sheriff does, to the tax office. And then they have to, they have to calculate a ten-page calculation of the 2024 tax rate calculation worksheet. And it goes through until it tells us at the back what we can charge, or no new revenue, voter approval rate, or de minimis rate. And so, we don't even know what our revenue options are until like August seventh, and we have to file a budget August fifteenth. So, it makes it real cumbersome to do budget planning and all, because we have to kind of do our spending and think what we're going to do, and we have to guess. Used to, it was pretty easy until a few years ago. We knew it was, had an eight percent cap. They had some bad terminology of rollback election, which meant the public had to force a rollback by getting petitions. They've changed that to no new revenue, or excuse me, voter approval, where it's mandatory if we go over a certain amount. Last year, we had a penny difference in the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. This year, on the calculations, it's five, five, five point, it looks like five point five, if I can read that, I'm going to lie, five point five cents difference. Last year was a penny, this year's five point five. I don't know what it'll be next year because this form changes and what they put in it. So, it's real hard to do any planning when you have no idea of what your parameters are until week, ten days before you have to file a budget with the public. And so, it is, it is cumbersome, and unfortunately, it makes it very difficult.
Well, one, I don't feel like that you've really answered my question. Two, I understand that y'all had so many days to get these numbers, but it sounds like what has happened is y'all just carried the previous numbers over and not really looked in, so, at the numbers and what was actually spent versus what last year's budget was. Which tells me that, I'm answering my own question, this has been y'all's budget meeting since June, July. Am I correct?
Now, we've talked about it in some part of the budget in every meeting since June.
Okay. And then whenever y'all got that in, what, August seventh, and you had till the fifteenth, that's eight days. Now, I know y'all meet two, every two weeks, basically, second and fourth Tuesday. But if you have eight days to decide on the details of the budget for the entire Hunt County, don't you think you could meet a little more in those seven days? Did that happen?
It's my job to present the budget to the court. It's hard to present the budget to the court until I have those numbers.
I'm asking them all.
I understand.
Did y'all meet? Did y'all entertain Mr. Hutchins' proposals? Or did y'all just do what I see you doing here?
Not get those till after the budget was filed, because he didn't have any numbers.
I still don't feel like I have an answer here.
If I might interject. This county desperately needs to return the old method of budget preparation that was until recently common practice. And when I came on this court, was my expectation would, was still the practice of having workshops, not special meetings, workshops. Those have been requested multiple times by multiple commissioners. We even built them into the budget calendar that after my first budget on this court, saw we desperately needed, so we had a budget calendar, which this court adopted. And then again, this year, we adopted a budget calendar again, and it even specifies the timeframe when we may have, we're not limited to it, but specifies a timeframe in June for budget workshops. So, I mean, the night is not, you know, it's getting late. I'm happy to be here as late as we need to be. But if, if the court's not going to entertain any budget cuts this year, and I think we should, then I would strongly urge that next year, as per our budget calendar, we have an actual workshop with department heads presenting their budgets to the court for allowing us an opportunity to ask questions altogether, so there's no he said, she said, they said stuff. And I think we'd have a much cleaner budget and a much more harmonious outcome if we do that.
I'm pretty sure that the citizens of Hunt County will be watching for that. And on a personal note, remember, I did mention to the majority of y'all that I will be, this is like your yearly performance review as employees of Hunt County. So, I hope y'all, like, get more involved with each other. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners?
On this, on his list, so there's, there's nothing we can entertain about cutting or nothing that we should cut?
Whatever y'all's pleasure is.
Okay. Would you get on the mic and talk, please? I can't hear you.
I asked on the list that Mark gave, they kind of described why we needed to cut, why we didn't need to cut. Are there things on here that we can cut that's not going to hurt us? If we cut it out and we need it through the year, can we still pull money out of fund balance to get that job done? Is my question.
We can't pull it from fund balance. It has to be pulled from some other part of the budget that has budgetary authority to spend it.
Okay.
Such as contingency.
Correct.
And how much do we have in contingency total?
Budget at two million.
Two million, I think.
That's, that's just the one contingency.
The whole budget.
So, if we cut this two, two million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand out, lower the budget down, then we have, say, we ran into all these problems this year, all this stuff happened on this list. We'd have two million dollars in contingency to pay for them, then we'd just still, we'd just be the six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars short. Is that correct?
Well, and to your point about, you know, making a one-time move of y'all's budgets and materials of eight hundred thousand and do a one-time transfer, then that will hit your budgets next year to have to increase it. Or increase, it'll be increased the tax, after we increase the tax revenue if you're going to pay for it somewhere else.
Judge, in reference to the past, what we've done in reference to the ARPA money, just applying it to beyond the budget. That's what we did last time when we spent, I think it was two fifty times whatever, I think it was three million.
We spent, out of ARPA funds, I think we did two million.
Okay, that ARPA money, you don't need to put it, because like you said, we'll end up having to... up having to come up with the same amount, just when we can add it to it as we did last time. Am I making sense? That's what we did last time. Therefore, we were able to spend that money. I'm using 250,000 because that was the last time that I can remember the 250,000. That was extra. We just spent it under, on the roads. All this time, yes, we've needed, we've needed more money. I want to tell y'all something, I probably should have given that thing out. Out of 290 or 260 something dollars, basically, you have about a 970 something. And each precincts out of that gets $33.75. And I believe I have some of those. I'll be glad to pass them out later. But basically precincts, it's always been through the history that we had to take care of everybody else first, whether it be judicial, what's required by law and so forth, and as far as public health and safety. And we've always cut ourselves short, basically, in reference to that. And in fact, when ARPA came along, we did spend some money. And I wish we had, you know, some more to spend in reference to it. But it does not need to put into the budget as such. It needs to be given on a separate line item in reference to that. Because otherwise, next year, we're going to have to get that again. That's what he was saying. And that's true. But in the past, that's what we've done. We've given it an extra, and we've been able to accomplish quite a bit. Yes.
Come to the mic, please.
It's American, it's American Rescue Plan Act.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And none of that made sense on ARPA and $33. And I'm sorry. It wasn't directed at me. But I totally don't comprehend how you can, in good conscience, vote for a budget that's 4.4 million in the hole. Because, I mean, I can't, I had to drop my newspaper, my magazines, my cable. You know, we go out to eat one meal a week. We're having to drop things because we're newly retired. And I have a teacher retirement, and my husband has an e-systems retirement, neither of which goes up ever. And so how can you vote to be, we're just going to do a $4 million deficit this time, and, you know, we won't cut anything? Thanks.
Masters?
Mark, on this, 2.6 or even the first one you gave us last week, the 1.7, is that including cutting out the amount for the precincts?
It does.
He said no.
He said it does.
My recommendation was that we...
There's some definitely in here that we can cut. I don't know about going through and worrying about a $250 one, a $500 one. I'm looking more at the $200,000 for the capital, or capital murder trial, stuff like that, I think is what we can look at. I did cut my budget two weeks ago, I believe it was, Judge, $200,000 as well to try to help out. But I'm willing to look at this a little bit more and see if some of the bigger numbers that we might be able to cut down some.
Daniel, you want to explain what happens if we don't approve something today? We can't meet again until Monday, and that'd be the last day.
Let me look at my calendar. Yeah, Monday is definitely the last day.
We can't meet prior to that either, I don't believe, can we?
Probably not realistically. Because every, every...
We can't post.
It has to be a 72-hour publication. So Monday would be the last day that you could vote on anything. If you don't, then basically it adopts a default tax rate, which is the no new revenue rate.
What does it do to our budget? We have to go with the proposed budget or spending? Or how does, we still approve that? Or?
You know, I don't know. I haven't looked at what it does if you don't adopt the budget. And I know that if you fail to adopt the budget and the tax rate by the 30th, then there's an automatic budgetary, or an automatic tax rate that is the no new revenue rate. I'm not sure, I mean, I've never researched what happens if you don't adopt a budget by that date. I certainly do that.
That'd be the last day we can do it, though.
Yeah, that would be the last day that you could do it.
We can't meet between now and then either to discuss it because we can't post a public meeting. That'd be the first time we could discuss it again.
If you're going to have a meeting on a weekday, then yeah.
I mean, we don't have enough time to have another date.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to meet Friday night, then you could potentially post that tomorrow morning. I don't know if people, we want to have a Friday night meeting for a budget and tax rate. I, this is not a back and forth. They're asking me for legal advice, and I'm giving it. Okay.
So it'd be, if we've had to post it tomorrow, for a Friday meeting at some point in time, whenever it gets posted?
Yeah.
And then we'd have to post Monday by Thursday?
By Friday.
If we do it at...
Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
If we do it at night, yeah.
Do it at night, that's great. Or by Friday morning, if you did a Monday morning meeting.
Right.
Do we go ahead and adopt the tax rate tonight?
No, you can't do that.
It's got to be all done at the same time.
It has to be budget first, then tax rate.
Okay.
What's the pleasure? You want to stay here and hammer it out, or you want to do something? Give everybody time to look at it and try to, try to get on Friday and then vote on it on Monday?
I'm adding some numbers together up quick.
I think it will be disappointing to the public, gentlemen, if we postpone this decision.
It's right down. We can't hear you.
I think it will be disappointing to the public if we postpone this decision again and do not make meaningful changes in the interim.
I'd like to get it done tonight, personally. I ran some rough numbers through this and see if it'll work. It take, came up with 855,000. You got, on forensic analysis, from 100,000 go to 75,000?
These are already talking about a $100,000 cut. So you're talking about leaving, so it'd leave only a $75,000 cut?
You'd leave 75,000 in.
No, he'd cut 100 is what that column said. Mark, is that right? That's the way I read it. You're saying to cut 100 from what is in there now?
Correct. Cut 25 out of it. On these, on these buildings on, like, 2507 Lee Street?
That's the courthouse.
At the courthouse?
Yeah.
We got cut 65,000 out of that. So I don't know how much we'd have left in that. Cutting that, but... And then we got 2,700 Johnson. It's 30,000 cutting. We'd take it down possibly.
Which one Johnson, 20?
2,700 Johnson, common.
This building.
That's this building.
That's this building.
On the Enterprise, what'd you say about that one, Judge? The, we're still replacing cars and stuff for Sheriff's Department, correct?
No, we still got, I don't think we anymore for the Sheriff, but we still have a few other departments that we haven't dealt with.
Do these departments not budget for vehicle purchases through their normal budgeting process?
We've been trying not to buy vehicles, and we've been going through the Enterprise, which is creative financing, which puts it into the budget, which if we stay with that plan, every four years, we'll be looking at replacing the vehicle, and it won't hit our budget hard. If we pay cash for them, it's my fear we'll look up again in five years, 10 years, we'll be back at 18-year-old vehicles. Because something in the budget will be there that we can't buy new cars. And I'm afraid we'll get right back in the same position we're in. So it's a, to me, it's a good budgeting tool to know that we're going to keep good vehicles on the street.
You said you talked to the district judges about the capital murder expense?
Yes.
What was their thoughts on, on that?
They said we could lower it some, but they've still got to have money because they don't know how much it's going to cost on that appeal, that automatic appeal. And they've already spent close to 100,000 on attorney that was licensed to practice in the appellate court. And he filed his brief, and then they said he's no longer eligible to do it. The court said that he can still do it. And I don't, I hadn't heard where it's at now. I don't, I don't, it's, it's above my pay grade. I don't know what they're doing. But it's a mess.
The $250,000 cut, I believe, off the top of my head, don't quote me on this, would take it from $750,000 to $500,000.
Capital murder expense?
Mm-hmm.
Say it again. I was looking something else. I'm sorry.
I've got too many papers piled up. Off the top of my head, I believe that 250 reduction would take it from 750 to 500.
What was left over last year? We just had another case filed in reference to murder.
Right.
Yeah.
We can't, that's something we can't. In fact, we had two cases, I think.
Mark, what was the original number on, I guess, number 52, the contingency expense?
Hang on a second, Steve. Sorry. Let me answer Philip's question. Requested budget, Philip, is 725. Year-to-date actuals on that line item are, and they may have gone up a little bit since then, but 163, 341. We budgeted in the current budget for $725,000 as well. We have to go back as far as '21, '22, a few years, was the highest number we spent on that line item. It was 508, 320, was year-to-date actuals, year-to-date actuals for that year.
In fact, when we entered to the agreement in reference to defense, do you remember what year that was? That's been six...
I'm sorry, Steve. What was your question?
Probably about 10. I think we entered to that agreement around 10 years ago, or something, nine or 10, something like that.
What, what was the original amount for the contingency and exchange? You've got cut 300 on here.
750. I just looked it up.
750?
Yeah.
Which one was that?
It's budgeted 750. Yes, that's correct. Shows no expenditures this year, but that may have changed. If there was an elevator that needs to be fixed.
Well, we had to move it out. We, it's, the current budget is 176 because we had to move money out of that to pay for the elevators.
Ah, okay.
So we did spend like 500, whatever that math is. I've got my book. Thank you. If anybody else does, they can certainly ask you.
I was asking about leftovers from last year. I'm happy to have some.
Mark, what other big ones are you concerned with?
Well, I mean, there is, there is a $400,000 contingency in Enterprise. We already talked about that one. 250, these are just the suggested cuts, 250 the capital murder expense, 250 the contingency for general admin, and 300 in the exchange building. There's a number in blue there on page 44. That might be a good one if we don't want to go with that one. That's a, there was voter administration, some new equipment they need. And so there, I mean, we could, I don't, I think we don't have a good, we aren't in a good position to discuss that one. That was more a matter of whether or not we wanted to pay for it all this year or pay for it all in the next budget year.
Which one was that, Mark?
It's on the second page, page 44, highlighted in blue as an inquiry. So, I mean, that might, that might be a good one to strike and...
Voter admin?
As is, yep.
Do what now? Voter admin?
The expendable equipment, basically, was that voting machine?
No. What she wanted to do is that when she moves to the new facility, the money that we spent over a million bucks on new voter equipment a couple of years ago, that we had, our others were breaking, we didn't have any machines. They're, they're in multiple pieces, and they're stored on shelves over where they are now. Most of those functions have to be plugged in. Most of the apparatuses have to be charged. And she want, for the new facility where she has a, will have a better storage facility, there's a, she wanted to buy carts that she can put every piece of equipment in it. And then she can plug the cart in, and the cart will then have the ability to charge all of the devices. And then when we take out, I think we had 35, 35 voting, polling places? 35, 36? That they could, it'll be able to just roll out and go into a truck, and then we can haul them out there. And then bring them back, and they'll close, they'll store better for them, they'll be safer. It'll be a lot simpler for transporting them out for voting, and she'll have room. Currently, she has no room to put those in there. What her suggestion in her budget was that she would order them late in next year's budget so that they would come late in the year. And then she'd order the other half in the following year. And if we're on target to have the building finished, that she'll have it all ready to go by the time she's able to occupy the building. So she was being responsible, physically responsible, trying to separate the money out and take care of it.
We appreciate you.
Garcia 1006, Sales Street. I just wanted to, Mark, when did you propose all these things again?
I, the first proposals were on September 3rd. There's 71 since then.
Okay.
So how much are we up to already then cut, that we've cut?
So were you, the question's the one that you and David had brought up or...
Well, we're all just staring here at a piece of paper. I mean, I'd like to know what, what everybody's proposing to cut so we can kinda come up with some numbers here. Because again, going through here, looking at something for $250, a couple, $150, that's not cutting just a whole lot. Cutting these 200, $300,000 some, I think that's where we can get somewhere.
I agree with you. If we're gonna do something, those are the places we can, you know, agree to his recommendation or agree to be something less than his recommendation. The smaller ones, I mean, the majority of them are less than $5,000, a lot of them are. Now, here's 1,000 for postage and we ran out of postage last year, I think. And on, uh, Mark, on that 38th, they're redistricting. We've got to redistrict the voting boxes because we've got two or three that are already over the limit of 5,000. So we're gonna have to do some redistricting.
Yeah, that's, that's why I coded that one inquiry.
Y'all were talking about forensic analysis. Forensic analysis, 100 likely don't need for these funds?
He said we could reduce it, he never gave me a number.
I don't, I don't think we, I think we need the funds for forensic. We'd rather not have to spend them, seriously. But there, you know there's gonna be...
Phillip, I believe that line item was budgeted when there was a new law passed. I think the judge explained this earlier. There's concern that the county would be on the hook for a lot of testing of drugs.
Uh, they were requiring it, but then the state that normally provided it was taking a year or two to provide it and so they couldn't file cases.
There was a big backlog.
It was a huge backlog.
But they haven't had to use it.
Well, when that took place, we weren't having to fund it for the simple reason they weren't charging to fund it. And then your legislators came into that aspect.
I'm sure it's prudent.
Go to private labs and not the state, Phillip, that's what we wanted to do.
Well, that's, that's why I say I think we need it.
Yeah, I don't think we can cut the 100 out, but I, we could cut, I think David suggested 25 would be, that would leave 75 in it. If it, if it continues on like it is, then we can look at it next year. But there's no certainty that they're not gonna need it. You know, the proposed 65,000 cut on the courthouse from, I think it was 130 or 150, I think David recommended 25,000, which is more in line. I mean, there's so many problems at the courthouse. Again, and again, that's not probably gonna cover it because we've got at least one of the elevators we're gonna have to replace in the courthouse in the next year or two. We had people trapped in one two or three weeks ago.
On that exchange building, he, he wanted to take out 300 out of contingency. That'll leave 450,000 in there. How bad is that gonna hurt?
Well, it doesn't help us really on our budget, it's, it's...
Oh, because that's on the...
It's got its own budget and it's, and it's got its own revenue. So changing something there doesn't affect anything as far as the taxpayer-funded budget. It doesn't, it doesn't move the needle.
That's right. It could be transferred on balance to reduce the deficit.
It could if, if, you know, if that was the plan for it. The plan is to keep it, uh, with its own money so that when we have these huge expenses come along, that it's got its own money to take care of it. So that's, that's what, and we've been trying to keep it separately so we know, you know, if it's making, you know, making something or costing us money, we're trying to run it like it's, it's, like it's an investment, like it is.
How much we wanna cut the capital murder?
You should...
I think what he's suggesting would be the absolute most.
250?
Yeah. Uh, the Enterprise, I wouldn't cut it more than 100. We don't, we still got vehicles that, I know we still got a few. We got a, I know we got a constable that's coming, starting new that, that, uh, in Wolf City that's got an old, old vehicle. They had an Enterprise vehicle that we moved down to Quinlan.
I say we do those two, that's 350,000.
Which two now, the...
Four, David.
Sir?
Cut the Enterprise 100 instead of four, so it's just, I'd say cut it 100, not 400,000.
Yeah, 100.
And I'd say your suggestion on the forensic of 25 is probably okay. Uh, the courthouse, I would not, I would not reduce that budget knowing that we've got issues at the courthouse. I don't...
That's 375 so far.
I don't wanna, I don't think, I'm not in favor of cutting the Sheriff's Department. They're doing too good a job.
Yeah, I put, I put that on inquiry, categorize as an inquiry.
If we accept the, the capital murder, it was still at 750, I believe, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was at 750.
He's suggesting a 250 cut and that would be probably okay for now. Uh, 100 at Enterprise. So right now, we got to cut the forensic 25,000. Uh, cut Enterprise by 100, cut capital murder by 250. That's 3, 375. So, Mark, back to the voters, 80,000, was that not to buy the, quit those?
I think she was, um, I think, I think she was planning on budgeting for half of that, those boxes.
Right.
This year and half the next, so that would be half of it.
I think that's what she budgeted, 40, didn't she?
I'm sorry?
Or did she budget?
Um, I believe 80.
80?
Yes, sir.
So you're, but that was for half of them?
Correct. She was going, she budgeted for 20 out of the 40 boxes out of this year's budget and then the remaining out of the next year's.
Your question, Mark, is whether or not you wanna cut that or not, so do you...
Well, I mean, I think we, I mean, if we wanted to say, hey, we'll just buy them all next year, we could. Um, I think her concern was that they might go up a little bit in price and so she was trying to split the difference.
You wanna take it out or leave it?
I'd buy them all and save some money, we know how it goes up.
We don't have any place to store them, Phillip. It's, she's wanting to order them late in the year, next year and store a part of them if she has to and then get the others the next year.
I, I, if we don't have a place to store all of them now, maybe it makes sense to get them all when we do.
Take another 80,000.
You gonna take that out for this year?
I say let's take that one out.
We probably will need to take her some flowers, though.
You probably need to do more than that, Mark.
Maintenance had to go down and get a snake out of her building this morning.
And two, and two rats last Friday.
Yeah. So it's probably not good to store it there.
I thought she was gonna quit on us a couple of times. If we don't get her out of that building, she probably will.
If that's a concern, I mean, there, there are other places to cut 80,000.
On that line item 38, it's, uh, he has contingency 250,000. I think in contingency, we got 2 million in that account, is that the courthouse building?
No, that's the, that's in general administration contingency for the whole budget.
How bad is that gonna hurt if we take 250 out of that?
I don't have a crystal ball. Hopefully, it'll be okay.
Say, let's do it and go for it.
Do that one and then be done with it. That'll be at, what, 700 or something now? So we got, uh, 125, 625, and then 80 would be 805 if my math's right.
It's 705 right now.
Five, six, 705, that's correct. All right, is that, are we ready to move on or are we still looking? Mark, you okay with the 705 we got right now? Got anything else?
I mean, it's not, it's not 2.6, Judge.
I understand.
Um, I, I think we've heard my position several times.
Phillip, you, Steve, any... Philip, you, Steve, any other additions to the, other than the, the one, two, three, four, five, five that's been suggested?
Mark, part of your two point six, is that eight hundred thousand, taking it out of road materials, though, correct?
Yes.
Correct. It was accompanied by the recommendation that we offset it from ARPA improvements on a two or three to one dollar basis.
Okay, you're wanting to take.
If you add the seven oh five with the cuts, and then the eight hundred, if you wish to replace that with ARPA money, you're at one, one five oh five, one million five hundred and five thousand out of that.
Well, if you take the three hundred out of the exchange building, and still I continue to say it's in a separate fund, that gets you to one oh five, one, yeah, million oh five. And if you take out the eight hundred, I believe the eight hundred road materials in there.
I'd, I'd understand this, if we take it, I mean, ARPA this one time deal, we'll have to come up with it next year, period. So why would we mess with that?
Because we have seven million in ARPA that.
I don't think that's right now, Mark. We voted on two point four or five the other day, and it was six point eight or something, you said earlier, and we did that, so I.
The report from our consultant shows that there is seven hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-six cents in unrestricted ARPA remaining, six million two hundred eighty-five, three fifty-eight point eight two in unrestricted.
Is that report after the two point?
This is.
Three, because I don't think we've told them that yet.
This report includes the two point four million.
Does, okay.
I think we should use that to provide better roads.
Well, if they were going to do that, just basically do it as we have and don't take it off of our budget, and if it's available, basically say, here's so much money in addition to that, and, and you can use it because it would be, well, it could be restricted or, or unrestricted, either way.
The unrestricted, the significance of that, Philip, is we can move that into our fund balance and do whatever we want with it.
Say it again.
The significance of that is the unrestricted can be used for whatever purpose.
That's right.
Move it to the general fund.
Well, no, we should, we have to obligate it. I think it has to be paid out of the ARPA funds, but it has to be obligated by the end of the year. I don't think we can just take it and move it into our account. We'd like to check with our consultants, but I don't, I don't think we can do that.
It has to be, it has to be obligated before the end of the year, and that's the only way.
Yeah, we've had to prove up everything on unrestricted to them so that they can justify if we ever get audited. So I don't think, you could be right, but I don't, I don't think that's right. I think we have to.
Well, even at that, even at that, the first of this year, in actuality, you can put it, start making it available to where it'll continue to be obligated as of October the first. But that still would not mess with each precinct budget. You start trying to make up later on because we took money out of it, you're going to have to basically pay that, then whatever else is needed, what percentage that we have enough. Cost of living type situation, or cost of material, basically, I remember we was paying forty-seven dollars for oil dirt, now we're paying eighty-three, and it'll probably be going up again.
I understand your position, Philip. I just think when we have revenue already available to us, it's already been taxed, either through property taxes or inflation, in the case of money coming from, from the federal government, we need to put it to use, and one of those uses needs to be to keep the tax rates down. There are very few services we provide that are more essential and felt by more people than roads.
Well, I thought I understood Philip say to do both, leave it, leave it in there for y'all, because it affects y'all's budgets, and then add eight hundred to the ARPA account, from the ARPA funding, to give you an additional eight hundred.
That's it.
To be able to fix more roads.
In actuality, I understand.
Then you don't get any of your fund balance, or you don't get hit with your budgets, is what he's trying to say.
Leave the budget alone on the roads and give us that ARPA money to spend like we did last time.
If I'm, if I'm looking at this right, Mark's numbers were two million six hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars. But eight hundred of that was ARPA money, and then three hundred was contingency out of the exchange building. If you take, whether we take those out or we don't, however we do it, that's one point one million out of that. And then you take this, you take, so you take that off of that two point six three one million, that drops it down to one million five hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars. You take the seven hundred and five thousand other ones that we cut, and now that number drops down to eight hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars, if my math is right.
Sounds right.
It could be wrong.
It sounds right.
But I don't think that we can, this is my opinion, I don't think that we can put, use ARPA money to balance a budget whenever you're not going to have that money after following years, you're not going to have that money.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Keep the budget that we have, heck, we never have had enough anyway. Then put that ARPA money that we have to spend, whatever that eight hundred thousand, put it in a, by itself, it can be used for road maintenance and road building, and that'll be extra. That's what we did last year. Do it again.
In the year before, I think.
A year before, time passes.
We did both of it, we did it twice, two different times.
Yes.
Philip, there's a lot of merit to that. I'm not arguing against it. I'm just trying to help with the deficit.
I understand that the precincts itself, in reference to, and I have that form. On a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar home, basically appraised, hot county budget and tax rate of point three three six, that's what it was this year, we got paid nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in reference to your tax on that county. Okay, the general government got twenty-nine percent, the judicial system got sixty-six, law enforcement got twenty-three, jails and correction got seventeen, health and safety two percent, community development one, infrastructure two. So all the road and bridge, basically, out of the point zero six six seven, I believe that's where our point was, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Out of that nine hundred and seventy-five, we got two hundred and fifteen dollars, and that meant that we got fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents out of that nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and y'all expect us to build roads, and that's what we've been working on. How many of y'all live in rural areas? Raise your hand. And then you tell the commissioner, you tell the commissioner, I want my, that fifty-three seventy-five won't buy a bushel of oil dirt. The precincts need some help, and the only reason that basically we got something done was because of that ARPA money added on to our budget. You feel like telling them, well, I'll give you a fifty-three seventy-five back. Am I correct? How many of y'all live out in rural areas? That don't buy nothing. We need all the help we can, give us the regular budget, then spend this other money, basically saying, spend what you needed on the roads, not buying equipment, but on the roads. And he's, just like he said, that eight hundred, the money that was spent, he's moving that, moving that eight hundred, saying, we don't need it. Yeah, we need it, we need it on the roads. I'm saying, give it to the precincts, divide it up, and give them till next year, so they can take care of the roads. And no equipment bought with it.
All right, so originally, we were talking about twenty-five, reducing forensic by twenty-five thousand, reducing enterprise by a hundred, generally administration contingency, two fifty, two fifty on capital murder, and eighty on the voters, which was seven oh five. And if you, whatever you, I mean, the exchange building, again, I'd beat that, beat that horse to death, but if you take that out, and if you took that out, you'd be at a million five, and as David said, that'd get, well, that gets down to two five, and then eight hundred of road materials would be the difference in that, so. I don't recommend taking out of the exchange building. It's, it's not going to help us on this, this budget. Still want to make more cuts, or we want to hear a motion to do something? Recommendations, or some additional recommendations?
With those cuts, does it? Do what?
I was going to ask, with those, if making these cuts, does that drive the, that three two, three three two eight, does that drive that even lower?
No, that gives us cuts into the deficit budget.
Into the deficit.
Sure.
Coming to the mic.
Daniel Ledford, eighteen twenty-five, FM thirty-six north, Farmersville, Texas. Merit. In my house, if my bills are five thousand dollars a month, three thousand dollars a month, and I'm bringing in twenty-five hundred a month, that means I have to cut it to twenty-five hundred a month. You said that for the last four or five years, you've been running a deficit.
We had a deficit budget, but we never, it never, we couldn't spend it all. We never got.
You didn't spend it all.
We didn't spend it, so we never got to the deficit because of COVID and the vehicles couldn't get in.
That's, well, like Mark said, the, the folks have been very good, the, the folks in the heads of everything. Well, I'm thinking that if you hadn't spent it, you ought to be able to balance it.
Well, we spent over five million on radios, we spent, I don't know how much on cars, and, yeah, so I mean, it's, a lot of what we didn't spend, we've spent, whether it be on the radio system, or the cars, or whatever, the raises, whatever else we've spent it on, it's been spent, it's gone to good, it's not just evaporated.
My problem's not that. My problem is that you've got a four million dollar debt.
That's correct, yeah.
Sorry, can't help myself. Thank you so much for staying so late to work on this. Jeff Phillips, six oh three, Mc Drive. If you, if you were able to just look at the budget, and I think someone said they had it online, and just took the items that, back to their historical spend, would that get you to zero? Has anyone just looked at that? All it is, is if you got a ten thousand dollars budgeted, and you've only spent, you know, eight thousand, just take it to historical spend. The likelihood you spending more is probably not going to happen, and if you are concerned about it in a particular item, add another one or two percent to contingency, but the offset is going to be so great, it'll probably get you to zero, to a zero budget. I, I don't know what those numbers are, but it would be worth someone taking a look at, I think, and that would be the easy way to get there, at least for this year.
Gentlemen, we can drag this out, but at the end of the day, if we're not going, if we're not sitting here making cuts that are going to close the deficit, what are we doing?
Well, if we do what we've said, we got seven oh five and eight hundred in the road and materials. You add the three hundred, I guess, into the contingency, we've, we've made a headway of a million five.
Is the only way to get to a balanced budget or not a non-deficit budget is take out contingencies different places, or how, how can we get there?
I don't think we can get to four point, whatever, whatever it is, four point six or four point, there's not enough on that sheet to get there. Four point four one seven million is the deficit.
Are y'all still saying to take the eight hundred out of our budgets?
I'm not, I haven't been saying that. I think Mark still is and I think David's not.
What I'm saying is basically, what we're going to do, we're going to have to hit, kick the can, and we'll do the same thing next year, even to get it back like it was. It's like government grants in some cases, basically, you can't get government grants and, in one law that basically says you can't cut the other simply because you, you can't cut your budget. Well, that's what we'd be doing on this. Now, that probably doesn't have nothing to do with that, but there are some things where I brought to the attention, basically, if you try to use that as part of your budget and you cut it, in order to use that, you can't do it. I believe that had to do with your district attorney, something about attorneys. You cut the eight hundred, put the off amount back in there, basically, you're going to have to come up with eight hundred thousand next year to put it equal. So why not, why not keep it?
It goes away at the end of the year. We've got to have it spend or.
Well, yeah.
Has to be designated by end of, has to be designated by end of year.
It's designated for infrastructure. A lot of, that's right. And that's what fixing roads and building roads about, doesn't it?
We won't leave any money on it.
I like you.
I mean, I'll make a motion for these, these cuts, but I don't think it's going to pass.
So you're making a motion for your entire cuts? As presented, is that what you're saying?
If you're uncomfortable with the gas being cut because it's necessary, I mean, we can leave that in there, but.
There, I think there's some others that you're, when you get over to the county network services, I think, I think some of those are required fees, some of them aren't. Some of those are we already committed. I know they added some, the courts add, add a new software program. It's probably going to be in some of that to repair and maintenance to load it up and get it, getting it functional.
Gentlemen, wait, if we're going to sit here and not make any progress, then the plan was clearly coming in to simply transfer fund balance to cover the deficit. I don't agree with that approach. I made some recommendations and I'm not trying to belittle any efforts, but we've had weeks to do this, or come up with other suggested cuts. And what was being proposed is, is better than nothing, but it's just not adding up to much. If, it feels like so, people are trying not to say, you know, we're not going to cut much, but that's kind of the direction we're heading. If we won't, I understand the argument for not cutting anything from the road budgets, but the deficit has to be covered somewhere. We've got six point eight million dollars in ARPA. It can be used for roads. That is a lot of money to offset. And I didn't even come in saying we should put all six point eight, so, you know, but if, if that's on the table, I'll, I'll make that motion. So there is money there to be spent for the citizens to provide services they need. It is too late to salvage all of this budget.
So you want to balance the budget with ARPA?
No, you can't do that.
No.
You can't do what?
Can't use ARPA funds like that. Some of it's still restricted. Restricted means the government gave it to us and said, we can only spend it on these certain things. Mark, they said, you know, you said it hadn't moved much, but it's, you know, if you take out the road materials that they don't appear to want to do, and it's their budgets, so if they don't want that, that knocks yours two point six down to one point eight. And, and then they recommended seven oh five, so they're halfway there. It's not like there hasn't been any movement at all. I mean, it's not as far as you want it to go, but it's, it's, it's moved. I don't know, I mean, all these other little small ones that are in here, I, there's, there's many of my, you know, personnel loss control, insurance deductibles, I don't, I'm not sure that, you know, Sandy's out, had surgery, our HR person, it's over her insurance. I can't ask her tonight what's going on. I don't know that that can be adjusted. A lot of these other expenses in there that you put, I don't, there's no way we can, can adjust them into Commissioner Harrison's point, a hundred and fifty dollars and seven hundred and fifty and five hundred and, you know, two fifty and two fifty, and those aren't getting us there very quick. We've been, they've been focused in, on the big numbers, and those big numbers have been pretty much addressed. I don't see any other big numbers that you're going to do anything with.
Budgets change from one thing to the other as far as money on hand and all this. Every time we meet, with the exception of tonight, we have to do line item transfers from one line item to another, whether it be fuel, whether it just go taking everything, equipment, maintenance and all this. And so they interact together and basically we come up here and say, hey, we need to change line items. We've got to take the money from this because we done had a trade or wipeout. You have to have money as far as in contingency. We do not have a contingency with the precincts. So we, how, how many line items do we swap around trying to pay for something, moving it out of one or the other? Y'all talk about, well, we're going to save two thousand here, will you? I'm talking about these deals in there that where they got two thousand, cut this that much. Basically, it's of my opinion that we've hit at the big things. But two thousand dollars is quite a bit if you need eight tires on an eighteen wheeler. That's about, well, even four of them cost nine hundred and twenty. We weren't expecting that. So the little things, you know, I've always heard in actuality, you know, watch your nickels and pennies, the dollars will take care of their own. Am I correct? That's true. But also, don't miss with the small things because then you spend half the time moving money around so you can go and do your job. Get the big items, cut what you can, and then realize that we're not paying ten cents for an apple no more. I believe we've done a good job in reference to cutting that right there.
Chris Talbot, eighteen twenty-seven, County Road thirty-three eighteen. Just out of curiosity, out of even maybe beyond just the line items that Mr. Hutchinson has mentioned, are there any other items that you could pay with the ARPA money that are, that you can cut down and basically supplement, say, take this other stuff out of our budget, but use the ARPA instead? Like, can you move that around that way to get more, a more balanced budget? Or are those, all those items are the, is it just the roads that we can really do that with? Or are there other items that you can look at to say, what can we borrow that six point eight million from and use that ARPA money instead of the proposed budget?
You can't do that with ARPA money. You can't balance the budget.
No.
I'm not saying balance the budget. I'm saying there's items that we have, like you said, there's eight hundred thousand dollars for the roads, but if we don't put that in the budget, but then you use the ARPA money, which is allowed, from what I'm understanding, that.
They're talking about two different things.
Two different things? Okay.
Yeah. They're saying, leave the budget alone and use more of that to fix more roads, not replace.
That's infrastructure.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying like the roads, I totally agree. I think all of us agree to spend all the money on the roads. But I'm saying, are there other items like that you can use the ARPA money for, or is it purely only that stuff?
I haven't, I have not read where it says we can use it just to reduce a budget. It has to be for items that we're purchasing or, or using it.
Right. So are there items on the budget that we could be using that money for? That's all I'm asking is.
None on this li, there's none on this list, except the only big thing is, is the roads, really. I mean, all the rest of them, you know, capital murder expense is the big one, two fifty, some contingencies, two fifty, enterprise cars, we can't use ARPA funds for cars.
I'm saying anything besides just that list, like the rest of the budget.
Yeah, you could use it to buy radios.
We are already.
Armit.
That's what we're spending, you know.
Didn't ask.
Basically, we set aside two point four million dollars, am I correct? Two point four million dollars last week in reference to it. We'd been waiting a long time. We had to get grants, works in order to okay it, which we knew, but we did anyway. And that was just for the volunteer fire departments. That was for ISDs and also some of the towns that could not afford this to where we could be on one communication. That's off the money. But also in reference to it, and what caused that was basically doing it into a contract of having communication throughout the county, and I'm talking about what, three, three towers? Is that right? Three of them?
We had to build one. We leased the, the other ones.
Okay, leasing the other ones in reference to this communications because the old radios are of no good in actuality. They've outdated themselves. And, and, and even the school itself, as far as the state mandates that they have direct communication to nine one one in the schools. And if you look, and that's important, and we, we were able to do a contract here locally with L three in reference to it. Okay? So that right there, you take U-Valley and then you take this attempted assassination, assassination a couple of weeks ago. Basically, they've come up on both cases that contact between law enforcement was not good, and that's why a lot of this happened. And so that was very important, and that's how off the money was supposed to be spent. Basically, even the COVID aspect, back when everybody was sick, all the, all the, you know, doctors, nurses and all that, we had to give money in reference to bringing in other nurses. The healthcare workers were having a problem. That's what off the American Rescue Act plan was used for. It can be used for basically infrastructure. Infrastructure, that's helping build roads. And the thing about it is, I believe we've used as much as we can in reference to that. We do have a deficit, but I think whether it's capital improvements is going to have to come and help us out in reference to that. But I want to tell you something, I have never, and I've been here twenty seven years, twenty years, I've never heard somebody say, we've got to spend the money so we can get it next year. In fact, you'll find out the majority of the people try to carry it over. So, you know, that's kind of out.
So I think what was just suggested is that if we could go through things like a budget, buying portable radios and radio parts, that you, we might be able to identify something like a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in one budget and two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in another budget that could be paid for out of ARPA instead of through new tax revenue. We have such items in the jail and sheriff's budgets. Now, I know we've already bought some radios, but there are budgeted for some more in here.
They bought a lot of them with their SB twenty-two money this past year.
Mm-hmm.
Which is five hundred thousand dollars worth of radio equipment.
Fish, that was where some off the money went.
That would be three hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars If you have your sheriff's budget, it's on the front page of the jail and the second page of the sheriff's proposed budgets.
What about it? You going to read something off of it or?
No, I'm just saying that's where I'm, I'm finding these items that, and there are cameras, body cameras, taser bundles.
We've got to be careful there because we, we're reapplying for the, another round of five hundred thousand dollars with SB twenty-two, and those are some of the things we can use it for. It's extremely restrictive of what we can spend that on. That's why we spent it on radios last time. Being a small cow, the state passed SB twenty-two last session and gave five hundred thousand dollars to all rural counties for sheriff's department. They gave two hundred and fifty to each of the prosecutor's office and something to the constables. I don't remember, fifty or seventy-five, that you could apply for to get SB twenty, get money from the state. The sheriff's office could, it was passed to say that all sheriffs in the, in the state and rural should make seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Ours was making more than that. The deputies had to be making more than forty-five. Ours were making more than that. So we couldn't spend it on salaries. We couldn't reimburse ourselves for that above it. But we could buy equipment, and it was specific on firearms and certain, there was about four or five things you could spend it on. And radios or safety equipment, I think is what it was called. So that's what the sheriff has been spending, part of his budget to offset it is with SB twenty-two money. The county attorney and district attorney could only use theirs for raises within their department, for prosecutors, and they could spend it on a new position if they didn't already have one for a victim's assistant director. And they could do that. So that money has been spent. The constables were not, were not eligible, our constables were not eligible for any of it. So before we kept going to the, I'm just saying, before we go into the sheriff's stuff, we need to make sure we're not, those may not be good areas to pick them, to say we don't, we can cut those out. Because those may very well be the, a few things we can spend with SB twenty-two. SB 22 money. We have to adjourn to do that, Daniels?
You can call if you did automatically adjourn temporarily.
Okay. We'll adjourn for 10 minutes for restroom break. Oh, okay. I got you. Yeah. Right. That's before you get in the middle of it. Well, I appreciate you stepping up and being the first one to say, man, we cut this. You at least presented something better than nothing happening. So you made stuff start moving, and I want to say thank you. Yeah. Well, just, I ain't called you that. Anything I've said's been right here. But, but just, anyway. I know it's a meeting, and I know it is, but, you know. Like, you pull a long one, and I think, bless your bars. I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Part of the job is-
I was about to add, did I?
They still work, they work.
Do you like those roots?
I'm sorry, I'm going to approach you, thank you for being here. Just trying to get it hashed out. Coffee's already gone off automatically.
I didn't. It's been seven minutes.
I had a trailer. I've had for 20 years.
Oh, yeah, 24. Put it in the wrong folder. I have too many.
All right, is everybody back? 9:40, and we're back in session. All right, commissioners.
Would that help us out any?
The ones in the courthouse, probably. I don't think we, I think we had to obligate it prior to order them, and they're fixing to put them in pretty shortly, so I'm not sure we can retro do it. We can ask grant works, but I'm not positive about that. So anybody want to make a motion? We still stuck? Everybody still thinking? What do we?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget with the deduction of $25,000 from forensic, the $250,000 from the capital murder, $100,000 from the enterprise, $80,000 from voter, and 250 from the contingency.
Which contingency? The general admission?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also use $800,000 of the ARPA money and divide it up between the precincts for road material for roads.
Beyond what's budgeted.
Yeah.
Beyond what's budgeted.
Probably need to do that separately outside the budget. I mean, we can take action on that at not tomorrow's meeting, but a future meeting. Daniel, I think I-
He's not wanting to add it now, Daniel. He's just wanting to-
You, if what Steve is saying is he wants to add that to the budget, then that can be part of the budget based on the way that the language is on the agenda.
So add another 800 to additional 800?
200,000 each to each precinct.
And leave the 800 that's in there the way it is?
Yes.
So let's go back. Can you go through your checklist one more time, make sure I got them all? The forensic?
$25,000 cut on it.
Okay.
$250,000 cut on the capital murder expenditures.
Okay.
$100,000 on enterprise.
Okay.
$80,000 on voter.
Okay.
And then the 250 on the contingency. That's $705,000.
Now, maybe there'd be a discussion.
Well, sure. Wait, hang on. We got a motion. I hear a second. No second?
Maybe we have some discussion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Earlier, in reference to retirees, have we made a decision in reference to that? And does that need to be made before this passes or before we vote on this?
It will be an additional to what Steve just said. We'll need to do that for that and the volunteer firefighters, both.
We did, we didn't, we didn't, I thought we did on the volunteer fire department. I thought we said-
Motion on-
Yes.
On the retirement?
Okay, so those are done.
Pardon?
Those are done. We voted on those. Do we have to vote again, Daniel, in the budget? No.
Well, yeah, effectively, you will be voting on it again.
No, no, but we don't have to say it in the motion.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. So do we need to approve these separately from the budget and then approve the budget with the changes?
You can do it either way.
Either way, okay. All right. So we, everybody understand the motion? Again, I asked for a second or further discussion. Okay, motion dies for lack of a second.
What would it do if we, on the budget, we took, like, we're at the end of the budget. We take what everybody spent. Say you had $80,000 budgeted, and you only spent $70,000. So, and if you budgeted $80,000 again this year, could we lower them down to $75,000? Would that make up the difference? I know that takes some work going through the numbers, but-
You mean every line item in the whole budget? Say that again, so I can make sure I understand what you're saying.
In the budget?
Current proposed budget?
Well, the 23, 24 budget, say-
The 23, 24, 24, 25.
The current budget that we're finishing up right now, like, say, a department had budgeted $80,000 in there.
Okay.
They only spent $70,000 out of that, and then maybe we can go back and look the year before that, and they had $80,000 budgeted, and they only spent $70,000. What if we lowered that number to go to 75,000, adjust their budget to 75,000, so we're saving 5,000, but that's not a big number right here. But if you do that all the way down through the budget, that 5,000 could add up to potentially a million bucks.
So to do that?
I don't know if that's possible, but that-
Well, I mean, anything's possible, but if we do that, we can't, I think it's not possible tonight to go through over 80 pages of budgets and lots of line items to make sure there's no mistakes in it. I think we'd have to do that on next Monday, probably, and try to have a meeting on Friday to see where we're at with all of those, make sure that everybody had time to do it, and come back with discussions on those items, and then try to approve it on Monday. I guess we could postpone it till, where'd Daniel go? Oh, there you are. If we postponed voting on anything tonight to Friday, then we could postpone it to Monday if we're not ready to vote on it Friday. So we can, if we got there Friday, we could still vote on it, but plan on moving it. But Monday, we can't, if we do that, we can't post it for Monday, can we? If we wait till Friday.
Well, it depends on the time of day. I mean, if you had a Friday morning meeting-
We got to post it in the morning, first thing, then, to do that, to get-
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we were going to meet Friday, we'd have to post-
Tuesday, Wednesday. No, we could, we'd be, Tuesday, today's Monday, so we could do Tuesday. If we did it tomorrow and Tuesday, we'd have Wednesday. If we did it tomorrow and Tuesday, we'd have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Well, if we posted it early tomorrow, we'd be Wednesday morning, Thursday. Yeah, we'd do it Friday morning, early, if we posted it early in the morning.
Yes, that's correct.
But then we still couldn't... We'd have to post it fairly early for a Monday meeting. If we had it Monday night, then we could post it on Friday afternoon, and then Saturday, Sunday, and then whatever time in the evening on Monday.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Can you approve the rate, the no new revenue?
No, we got to do the budget first.
Or you have to approve the budget first?
Correct.
You have to do the budget, and then you have to...
Ratify the...
Ratify the budget, two separate votes, and then you have to do the tax rate.
So, we postpone till Friday morning, and then we can postpone, if we don't resolve it Friday morning, to Monday night.
That's correct, yeah.
We have to have it done by October the first.
September thirtieth.
September thirtieth. September thirtieth, Monday.
Well, by...
We okay with that?
If we're going to cut more... Yeah, yeah.
Phillip, Steve?
I'm good with that. But like Mark says, if we're going to postpone it again, we need to come back with some serious changes and not try to come through here and cut a thousand here and cut a thousand there. We've got to get serious about it and be ready for Friday morning, potentially Monday afternoon or evening, if that's what we're going to do.
My deal is, is I would really love to approve it tonight, but with all these people and voicing their concerns, I think... And then we did do some cutting tonight, but I think we need to go back and take a few days and look through it just to see what else we can do with it and go from there.
Okay.
I think what we need to do while doing that is basically look and see what we've already done, make sure that we're on the same level or the same knowing of what we're doing, not just what we're going to do. Good example, as far as the retirees.
That's done.
We've taken care of that. We've taken care of the fire departments.
That's done.
In more than one way. We've... We're talking about the eight hundred. I like the... I like that aspect of it. I think it's the right thing to do in reference to ARPA money. Is there anything else that, to your knowledge, that needs to be done besides go a little bit further in that?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Not from a legal perspective. I mean, all of that is political and financial, so I don't know. That's... As far as, from a legal perspective, what you need to do is you can move in a single motion to postpone action on items one, three, to, you know, Friday morning at ten, if that's when you want to have it. And then all of the other legal issues, because what you're talking about here is adopting no new revenue rate. There are no other separate posting items that need to occur to make that legal. There would be if you were voting on a rate that's higher than the no new revenue rate.
Which we can't do.
Which you... Yeah, I mean, it's impossible to do that at this point.
Gentlemen, I am not opposed to postponing, but if we do, I'd reiterate and agree with Commissioner Harrison, we better come back with some serious cuts. We're wasting everybody's time. Might as well take a vote tonight.
If you've identified all the major cuts, I don't know how we'll find any bigger cuts.
If we approve the budget as it is right now, it's still not going to affect the no new revenue. It's not going to affect the tax rate.
No, correct.
Correct.
Tax rate will be the tax rate. It's just whether or not we have a deficit budget or not. And then next year will tell us whether or not, you know, what our deficit turns out to be, if it's the whole amount or something less than that.
In actuality, that's basically in reference to the deficit. Capital improvement monies or whatever that can be used, possibly needs to be looked at, looked into, to make sure we do have a balanced budget.
Certainly, if the appetite is we want to spend more money on ARPA that's eligible to be spent, we could... And next year, as we go into next year's budget, we could find potentially more items as we get further into the year, before the end of the year, and pay for some things, maybe out of the ARPA funds that we don't have to pay for with taxpayer dollars that we'd be able to get to that deficit.
Okay, but that'll have to be decided...
And we don't have to decide anything.
Before the 7th thirty-first.
We could go with the intention of trying to find items or groups of items, if we're allowed, to pay for that are currently budgeted and pay for them with ARPA funds and not taxpayer funds, and get our deficit cut down that way.
I'm good with moving forward like that, if it's the tax rate, the no new revenue, but I'd like to get the balance budget, budget balanced.
Could you restate that, Judge Stovall?
Instead of sitting here tonight and trying to guess around what we might could spend the ARPA funds for, I'm saying that I'm fairly certain there will be some items within that, the budget, maybe specifically out of the sheriff's office or one of the larger budgets that we could pay for some things budgeted, i.e. the voters administration money that we were trying to take out. We could actually buy that with ARPA funds, probably. So, there's things that if we left them in the budget, we could spend some of the ARPA funds to buy down some of the expenses, and then, in effect, we'd be buying down the budget and that would be cutting the deficit down with ARPA money, just not having to decide it today or Friday or Monday.
But we'd have to pass the budget, know what those things would be?
We'd pass... If... All I'm suggesting is we could pass the budget as it's presented with a four-point-four million dollar deficit and pass the tax rate and be complete with that part of it, and then into next year, we can look hard at finding things that we could pay for that would help to reduce the budget.
We've had a lot of discussion the last few weeks about the difference between plans and intentions. I'm not comfortable this time moving with intentions to adopt this budget.
You're not? Okay. Anybody else got a comment? Sure.
Here, turn that towards you, please.
All right, can you hear me now? All right, just having looked at the budget, we have forty-seven million dollars is what this tax rate will raise. Currently, our labor to support this is forty million. That leaves only seven million dollars of other expenses that can possibly be cut to balance it. That's a hard row from just listening to what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Really, the only way to get there is using ARPA money.
Our fund balance.
Fund balance.
And the deficit budget is how you spend your fund balance down. You can't spend your fund balance down if you don't budget to spend it down.
Sorry, Jeff, again. I might have to get one of those name tags. I don't know. So, forty million in labor, seven million goes back to the county for... to benefit taxpayers? Just like any business, I'm not going to be popular for any county employee here, and I'm sorry, but when you got to balance a budget, you can look at labor. You can. That's the largest expense, and every business leader always has to look at labor. One of the things that I have a question on, and it'll just be a question, and you can respond back, is did I hear that employees put in seven percent and we match what...
Two hundred.
We match two hundred percent? So, again, over twenty years at Fidelity Investments, the number-one 401K provider in the United States, there's not any... There's not any private company that does two hundred percent that I know of. So...
We inherited that.
Well, you can change it.
They tell us we can't. We've asked.
Somebody can, because it's a plan. I don't know what the legalities are there, but it at least should be discussed, a matching of two hundred percent.
I agree. I've always said that.
Okay. All right, so...
I was asking. I was told we couldn't change it, so I...
Is that a legal position or a plan position? Can I ask you? I don't know if I can ask you questions or not. Is that a legal position or a plan position?
That's a plan position, I think.
I have no idea.
Okay, all right. Leave me out of it. That's good.
You got to come to the mic, ma'am. I'm sorry, but we can't. We got to have it on record.
Carla Naromar, 10803 Old Mill Road. I worked for the county for a couple of years. It's a statewide plan. The state sets that. It's Texas... Y'all know.
EDR, yes, I think.
Texas County and District Retirement.
EDR, yeah. And so, that is set by the state. It's great. I put in as much as I could because it got matched, and it's wonderful, but I rolled mine over.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the budget, or do we have a motion to postpone until Friday? I've heard both the discussions. We have a motion for either one of them? Do we need to order pizza or something? Oh, it's after ten, now it's closed.
I'm making a motion that we postpone till Friday.
You need to say postpone what? All three votes that are on the agenda?
Yes.
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, before to answer, to respond, I don't see how we get out of this without a deficit, a small deficit. We're trying to just eliminate as much of that damage as possible. But if, again, I don't want to beat this dead horse, we had ideas in front of us. If you think you're going to go get more ideas to cut the budget, then great, but there's just only so much to work with. And so, if we're not willing to say no to the things we have in front of us and cut those, I don't know where you think you're going to get, you know, enough more to bridge the deficit. So, I mean, the time to, you know, not have this deficit budget would have been earlier. We've had weeks to work on this. And the starting point was a tax rate increase and sixteen-point-three-nine percent proposed increase to the budget. That put us in a pretty darn big hole. I don't know if we can climb out of it or imbalance it, especially if we're not willing to say yes to the cuts we have in front of us. I mean, and I don't want to monopolize time, but...
We got a motion to postpone items one through three till Friday morning at ten a.m. Is that the motion?
That's what I'm... Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion. I hear a second. Motion fails for lack of a second.
Order pizza.
All the pizza places are closed. I already checked.
My name is Michael Pate. My address is fourteen, fourteen Tremont Street. I'm looking over the budget plan right now, and you guys are proposing to move it to Friday, but there's a hundred and eighty-seven pages. You guys plan to go through that in a week or less than a week?
About half of that. Not all of that. A lot of that is different... It's fee accounts, fund accounts, that don't affect the tax rate.
So, I'm looking at some of this, and some of this is double or doubled and increased in projected cost or needed funds for things. Looks like the sheriff department's got a four-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in salaries. I don't know how many employees there are.
Hundred and sixty.
Yeah, so I mean, divide that into the four-hundred thousand. I mean, there's quite a few things in here that are doubled. Here's for each agent, a red hourly. You're talking about thirty-five to forty percent increase. I mean, I don't know if we're hiring a whole bunch of people or we're getting new vehicles. I'd also like to... You brought up SB twenty-two from the state. I'd like to know why the counties, the cities, aren't applying for that, why we haven't.
We have.
Okay, so...
We got it this past year. We're reapplying for it right now for next year.
Is there a record of where those funds were allocated or where they were used? I mean, if we're requesting for new equipment... We shouldn't be requesting for new equipment if they already have it, right?
This year, the sheriff... Where's the sheriff in them? It was all... It was all radios this year. It wasn't? Okay.
Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Well, it does, except, you know, I respectfully disagree with you about salaries. It's taken us a while to get them up there so we can get anybody to work for us. We're competing against everybody in Dallas. We can hire somebody to lower pay, get them licensed, and immediately go to Princeton or Farmersville or somewhere to make more money, and we're right back in the same boat again. So, that's... That makes it a little tough with all law enforcement.
I mean, that was just a quick...
I understand, but it makes it tough.
I've noticed that all pages are based off of each department, I guess, for the county. So, and I just use the biggest number, but there's tons of things on here that are doubled or sixty percent increase. It's just, I don't know. I mean, I just don't foresee you guys going four days of looking through a hundred and seventy-eight pages, or in your case, you said half, so...
Or less.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of pages of lines. So, anyways, I just wanted to point that out because it's kind of crazy. I'm not saying that some of these, most of these aren't needed, but it's... I just don't foresee you guys going through this in four days.
Some of those things that we're looking at as far as the increase in pay, they became special, actually investigators having to learn how to handle mental health people and stuff like this for your information. A lot of that has been brought about due to everybody thinking that everybody has a mental problem. Some of them are just...
A lot of them do.
But like, let me use an example.
Over fifty percent of the people in our jail are mentally sick.
Let's use an example. Constable Ford, last year, had no budget for, well, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, had a budget of seventeen hundred dollars for equipment. had a budget of seventeen hundred dollars for equipment. This year, it was approved for zero. They've spent thirty-three six. Oh, that's not right. So, like, I'm just trying to understand, like, if if we're trying to stay in a budget, why aren't we holding people accountable to staying within the budget that they're allocated? And then why are we trying to increase it when they can't even prove that they can stay within that budget? There's an issue there with the personnels in those offices. I don't know who the constable Ford, sorry, but.
He's not here, so throw him under the bus.
But. But anyways, my biggest concern is, is I don't, I just don't foresee you guys going through all these lines within four days. So, I don't know if it's something that you would have to have the whole county get together and do together, but it's just, it's a lot of stuff. Anyways.
Thank you.
I don't see a point, I'm not going to make a motion to adjourn, gentlemen, if we're if we're just going to postpone it and not come back with more cuts. And I just haven't seen the evidence of that, so that that's why I'm sitting here quiet. If I sit here and we just wind up with more cuts, that's great. But we have got, I would remind the court, the people sitting here, we've got twelve, it was actually over twelve million in capital improvement. We got almost seven million, well, six point two, whatever it was, six point eight, I think six point two, in unrestricted ARPA money. If we can't, if the goal is to try and go find things that we can use the ARPA money to spend on to offset those costs and bring down and bring down the the budget, that way, or the new tax portion of it, I should say specifically, because it's it's complicated, but part of this is funded by new taxes. Part of it is is funded through fees and other things. And the ARPA money that's sitting there does not count toward the new tax taxes being done, so being being raised. So, if we're going to try and go find four point four million dollars of things to spend ARPA money on out of the out of the new revenue portion of the budget, I mean, that that's fine, but again, I'm skeptical.
I don't think there's that much to cut in there. I don't know where you cut it, not that much.
Jeff is right, you know, if we want to start cutting on the personnel side, we could do some of that, but I I would be, I couldn't in good conscience do that while sitting on twenty-eight, twenty-three point eight million in fund balance, thirteen million in capital improvement, and seven million or whatever in ARPA. I'm not going to take it out on the employees. If we had meant from the beginning to try and reach a new revenue rate, you know, semi-balanced budget that way, I'm sure we could, we'd be having a different conversation, but that wasn't the case. But someone else needs to say something.
How do we get there?
You've had a motion to approve the budget with some of the cuts, and you've had a motion to adjourn the meeting until Friday.
And that sucks.
That'll, we sit here tonight, which we're not getting anywhere, obviously, by now, of trying to make more cuts.
I agree with that, I mean, we're not getting anywhere. We approve one of the motions, one one he made to cut the line items, which, what'd they total, seven oh five or something like that? And we could, it still doesn't stop us from looking at spending money out of the ARPA funds where we can, out of the budget, to get closer to a balanced budget on this year. To bring down the deficit. Mark, I don't, I don't know if we can find, like you said, I don't know if we can find it or not, but there may be avenues.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, we've we've got, again, we've had numbers in front of us, we won't go with them. I understand if we want to cut a couple of those items out of that list, but what's wrong with cutting two hundred and fifty dollars from one line? What's wrong with cutting five hundred from another one? A whole bunch of littles make up for a lot. I've been up till midnight multiple nights, so this is not new, with this ruler going over these line items. And, yeah, there may not be four point four million in in cuts there, but there's there's for sure two point six. So if you if y'all are just not willing to go to two point six, guys, and just say it, and let's be done. These guys are waiting on y'all. How about we drop from this page? We can drop the, it's number thirty-one down there, it's for forty-six thousand. That's just an increase in training schools, but it's for law enforcement, so we want to make sure that's not going to be an issue for them. We can drop item number, number six, for eight thousand for GAZV compliance, since we need that. And we can drop, we can keep it, by drop, I mean drop from this list of cuts, we can drop eighty thousand dollars on this list, from voter administration. That's one hundred and thirty-four thousand for those three items, and that gets us to two point, two million four hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred dollars, that's two point five million in cuts. Are we willing to do that? I'll make a motion, let's approve those, I make a motion as stated.
What does your red items mean versus the blue?
I haven't been able to talk to them about that.
Okay.
Which I realize has, you know, tried to, but.
I'll say I.
I know those numbers are pretty, were pretty high over historical trends.
Do you remember this? The blue is inquiry. Have you inquired on all those?
No, that was, that was a draw to the attention of this court.
You got redistricting for sure that doesn't need to come out. Thirty-eight. I'm not comfortable with.
That's five thousand, we can't get that out of contingency somewhere?
I understand, you said one hundred and fifty and two fifties, I'm looking at all of them. The county network services, I'm not comfortable with those without talking to Brandon.
We have too much going on in reference to that, as far as software and all.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't know what all those, I don't remember what all those were. I'm not comfortable with the insurance deductible, I don't know what, how that affects us.
Let's see, what what's the number beside that, Judge, I don't.
On which one?
The insurance deduct.
Forty-two.
Okay.
Uh.
Yeah, it's totally fine, I don't know why I put that one in there, I normally leave insurance alone.
I think dues and subscriptions under general administration. I believe that, I believe that's for our association dues and all.
Which one, which page?
Uh, it's thirty-eight in the blue.
We all have dues and subscriptions in our own budgets.
Yeah, but I think we have to have a master one for the TAC. Yes, I think it's about that amount of money. I'd have to check it, I'm. I don't think we can cut postage twenty-five thousand out of general administration, like I said, we. I know that Tax Office raised theirs, because we've grown, there's more statements to mail out, theirs theirs is going up.
Tax Office budgets in their own line, in their own budget for.
I understand, but I'm just saying, if theirs went up, I'm sure that ours went up too, is the point I was trying to make.
On the postage, Brittany said, you can't cut the postage because the cost of postage has come up significantly. And then on top of that, you've got the district clerk that sends upwards of five, sometimes eight hundred summons a month, if not more. And then you've got voters, even though they've got their own machine, now they still pull from the same account, so they use the most postage as well.
I'm just curious, page fifty-nine, there's a, there's a line for road material, six hundred and seven thousand dollars increase. It looks like this year, they've currently only used a one point one million dollars, they budgeted for one point eight four.
Is that just road and bridge?
Yeah.
Some of those have fund balances, and the only way to spend your fund balance down is to, is to budget more, to spend it down, I don't, I'm not looking at it, so I'm not not sure.
I'm just curious, do we need seven hundred, seven hundred thousand?
Well, they need more than that for road materials, I'm sure, they can't.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Well, that, we have to carry fifteen percent over which of that that budget? So you're having to carry over right at five to six hundred thousand. And here's why, because between October and January, you have to have something in there, some money to use, just like you would in a bank on the off season. So we're out of that, we're paying salaries, men, road material, equipment, all this. So that was a policy of the county.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, I believe that's not my budget, but it's already been reduced at the commissioner's request.
Line by line.
Yeah.
I guess my point, Mark, there's some of these, we can't just go through and say, I'd be very uncomfortable just saying, take them all out. Some of these are new, that weren't on there last time. I don't, I don't think that that's anything that we can cart lots do, tonight, anyway.
Well, it probably won't help much, but I think we definitely need to put, the court needs to put its colas on on the chopping block, too. We can reduce those. If we can't cut somewhere else, we don't need, we don't need a cost of living adjustment. You'll have to offer something up, guys. Sorry if I'm getting frustrated, but this is, this is not fair to these people. Even if if you eat, bear with me, theoretically, some of these things, we go back and go, hmm. Maybe we cut that a little close. We have still got a contingency fund. It's budgetary authority, we haven't used but a quarter of it this year so far. If you're going to keep these, then let's cut some more from contingency then, that'll help.
Where can we cut contingencies out of?
I think you have the one in general admin, it's page thirty-eight. Then you have the the Exchange Building on page fifty-two. There may be more, but that's the, those are the big ones. And I know we have concerns about our buildings being old, but we've got, as, you know, we've gone over it on this court before, a lot of line items in facilities and maintenance that are just high over the historic trends. If we want to cut those to something more that's approaching, and I've I've recommended this before, more approaching what the historical data suggests is a, is an expected level, and combine all that, put, and I think this is like what Jeff suggested earlier, put about twenty-five or fifty percent of that in a contingency for just that budget, and then cut the rest. That would be a more reasonable way to reduce that that budget. But but we've had the opportunity to do that before.
How much do the elevators cost over there?
At the Exchange Building?
Yes.
Uh, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, I don't remember, something, just under a million, something.
Where would we get that money?
Out of contingency from the Exchange Building.
That's what we got in that budget, is seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
That's my, that's why I ask.
Can we pay for that out of ARPA? We don't know?
I think, I think we've already paid part of it, I don't think you, I guess with the unrestricted, we might could, that's a question for our consultants. I would think maybe. But again, I'm going to go back, I mean, we're paying for that with funds that are being driven by lease money, not by the taxpayers. So I don't, I don't know how that helps us get to what we're trying to get tonight by dealing with the Exchange Building.
When this budget was proposed, it budgeted two point seven million dollars in ARP contingency. There's yet another contingency item there. We know that that amount is unrestricted, it can either be put into the fund balance.
That money is in there because we voted on paying for either things going on at Putten Hill or the radios, I don't remember which, but it's it's on one of those.
We have twelve million dollars in cap in capital improvement, and where I understand, we're going to hear a presentation from architects and engineers soon, and I'm assuming there's invoices that need to be paid there, but there's not a, there's not a plan beyond it. Those funds can be brought back into the, into the fund balance. If we're going to have a deficit budget, then we need to capture every dollar that's out there without a plan, a dollar figure attached to it, put that back in the fund balance, and let it sit there until we have a plan, whether it's capital improvement, ARPA, whatever it is. But we've got money all over the place, and we're sitting here unable to get to two point five million in cuts.
On page thirty-eight.
It's not an, it's an unwillingness.
You got, on page thirty-eight, you got the contingency on that is two million. Is there a way to adjust that?
Already, two fifties is what was already suggested, I believe, yeah.
That was already suggested.
I made a smaller recommendation, but we could cut a million of that. There's a million right there, well, it's an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand.
That's the general fund contingency?
Mm-hmm. I maintain the $400,000 in enterprise, which is on my list. In deficit budget, if you don't have a PO on a truck, you ain't getting it. My guys drive old trucks, and they do just fine. I understand we need to get a lot of trucks for the sheriff's department. They needed them, and they're chasing bad guys. We've got to get them in decent trucks, but... There are line items for enterprise littered across the budget, and a lot of them with big increases. If you need an enterprise truck, budget in your budget for it, and cut this 400,000. To the postage question, we have in a general administration line item 611-2800-3140 postage. In '21, '22, we spent $160,528. We, in '22, '23, spent 125,295. In the original budget, sorry, in the current and original budget for this year, we budgeted 150. We spent 66,000, and we're budgeting 150 again. Well, there's that 75 right there. There's another 75 right there.
We had an increase. Let me ask you this. We had an increase. I don't know whether it's on the budget as far as regular budget or... The election administrator, basically, if I'm not mistaken, we had to spend, if I'm not mistaken, what, 30,000 more because of a runoff and all this bull? There was something involved that had a heck of an increase, and we had to put money into it. What was, you remember that?
Yeah, there was additional, I mean, there's been additional postage on a lot of different things. For bigger, we got more, I mean, we, they send out 300, 400 notices almost every, every week for jury duty, and postage has gone up in the last short period of time.
I understand it is...
Some machines that I know ran out of money. I don't know which department they ran out, but there were some that ran out last year. I don't know how we've been spending the higher numbers you're saying and then lesser numbers now, unless it's because we, somebody's moved it to a different budget and I don't recall or don't, didn't know about.
Well, we're going to sit here. We might as well look.
Jeff Phillips, 603, make again. 85% of your budget is on payroll. So if you're unwilling to find the cuts, other than that, you have to look there. I'm going to be the most unpopular person in Hunt County, but you have a budget that's 85% based upon payroll and incentives and insurance and all those type of things. Balancing budgets takes courage. And I expect this group to have courage. And it's hard, especially when you're talking about people. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we get rid of anyone, but if there's a cost of living increase, if it's 3%, maybe it should be 1. If it's 1%, maybe it should be a half percent. I don't know. I don't know enough about the budget, but as you can probably tell, I, you know, unlimited supply of suggestions, so that might be, you know, something you can look at as well, especially if now that we know that county employees are getting a 200% matching. That's awesome. That's great for retirement. I've been in the retirement business. That's wonderful. But that's, that's more than anyone else that here is getting, so that should be in their total compensation. If you can't find it somewhere else, that's where you have to look. If, Ms. Corcoran, I think you said, 40 of 47 million is payroll and everything associated with it. That's 85% of your budget. So you just got to figure out where you're going to look, look. One's easier than the other, but probably at all needs to be looked at. And again, I'm happy to help.
How many people do you have in your office where you work?
I'm retired, man. 47,000 people.
27,000.
Not all under me, though.
You know, we talk about cutting people and all this. I got 254 miles of maintenance, and I got 12 people trying to do all that. So what I'm saying is, if you don't have enough, it's kind of hard to cut. 12 people to take care of 254 miles.
85% of this budget in the county goes towards personnel, which helps run the county for us, which is wonderful and awesome. And we appreciate every single, because when I need something done, I can get it done. But 85% of any budget, any business on personnel doesn't leave much room for anything else. So put a business mind to it and solve the problem.
In reference to jail standards and all this, you have to look at that because we're required to have so many, in fact, well, I don't see them right there. Basically, we're required to have so many to take care of those people that are in jail. Am I correct? Tell me this. How many vacancies you have right now? Out of how many?
Well, if that you have in jail?
Yeah.
84.
That's right. That's why I'm saying jail standards basically says you will have this much. I would venture to say between your precincts, probably 10, 12 each. Others have that, basically, and then you take... I don't think some of the other offices would be even more so than that unless it's the office across the street, tax office. But otherwise, basically, we're undermanned right now, to be quite honest with you. And as long as we can take, keep, in reference to the jail and within the, you know, the goodness of the state as far as letting it stay open, we're doing real good. I can, I can see basically what you're talking about, not giving increase in pay. But that's what all these people out here have been, is because we're supposedly in a recession, and we can't buy food, and that's why they're here here. I mean, that's it. I want to tell you something. Over this last week, I've listened and I've heard sad stories. And I, I can tell you that's very true, and they were from the heart. But basically, I'll say this. The people that we have worked, I've worked with them 20, well, actually, further, longer than that, because, but we got some, we got some good employees here, but they have family to feed also, and so that's it.
Yeah, I just, I just want to go on the record saying, as I appreciate all the employees in, in Hunt County. My, my point to the court is, you have two options. You have 85% is payroll. You can look at that. That's a harder thing. But what I'm out here hearing for the last two and a half hours, I can't get anyone up here to agree on cutting a contingency or moving a line item to the historical spend when no one has spent that before. Just move the dang line item in the budget down to what people spend, and don't pad the line item. It's easy. It's very easy. If you give me your budget, I'll help you balance it by this time tomorrow night.
Jail money, 1494, private road 1174. Guys, we're y'all's friends. We appreciate what y'all do. The budget cuts that are being asked for seem pretty reasonable. You got to cut them somewhere. Got to look for, got to look for something. I know it won't be easy. I'm going to go with Jeff. It's going to be, it's going to be hard to do, but, you know, we can't kick the can down, down the road forever. It'd be good to go ahead and make a decision about what, what could be done. There's been a lot of suggestions, and surely some of them could, could work, even if it's just a small sliver of, of each one, so thank you.
Thank you.
If I can, I'd make a motion that we just postpone this, and we meet back Friday morning and find the cuts and go with them.
Here's a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So, uh, so we were, we didn't post, we need to postpone items 1 through 3?
Items 1 through 3 till...
Yeah, so let's restate the motion. The motion should be, we're postponing till Friday morning at 10, items 1 through 3 on the budget. That was the motion. Was that the second? Second. And then re-vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
I'm opposed, just because I don't, I'm not convinced we're going to come back with...
Okay. So we got four to one. Anybody else got any comments? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
You have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 10:41. So all we need to do is change the dates.
Judge, you get us turned off?